Do we have any board comment before we go into the meeting? I have a couple announcements. I would like to, because I think, Adam, it's the first time you're on TV with us, so to introduce you to the public, this is our new lean use director, Adam Bernie, and we welcome you, thank you, and we're thrilled to have you. It's been a long 10-month, so we're excited to have you. My second comment is to thank Marjorie. Marjorie's on the end here. She is the Administrative Assistant for the Planning Board. And our director went out in January, and Marjorie has been running the planning office since January till Adam started October 6th. As a board, we've done a lot this year. We have a lot of developments in front of us. We passed a marijuana bylaw. We did, in March, contract with MRPC for about 10 hours a week, which included hours at meetings. And we have lengthy meetings that poor Marjorie has to type all the minutes to. So I want to thank you. You really stepped up to the plate. The office ran smoothly. And my first year as Chair, it was a lot for both of us, but I think we both did a great job, and I think that the effort we had put was greatly appreciated. And on the third note, I see it was in the newspaper, so I just want to address it. He had a workshop last week, and one of another person that volunteers on the Stewart Commission, and his wife's a selectman, had a health issue in our meeting. And I just wish his family a quick recovery in health. And our thoughts were also to him and his family. So I thank you for that. And now, the first agenda item we have is some minutes. We've got a lot of minutes stacked up. So the first, these minutes are all sent to us via email. So we've read all the minutes. So the first set that I'm looking for a motion on is the 9:2214, regular scheduled meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meetings from 9:2214.
Any discussion on the said minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next set of minutes I have is 9:2214, a public hearing for 221 White Street.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:2214, Whiteswood's hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion for the public hearing from Whiteswood's? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I have minutes for 322 Flat Hill Community Solar. We just opened that and closed it due to not having a quorum. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:2214, Flat Hill Solar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next that we have is 9:2214, 909 Massachusetts Ave, public hearing.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:2214, 909 Mass Ave hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. Next set of minutes is October 6th, 2014, regular scheduled meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 10:0614.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have minutes for 10:14, 2014, the regular scheduled meeting.
Make a motion except the minutes from 10:1414.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the last set of minutes going is the 10:1414, 322 Flat Hill Community Solar, the October 14th public hearing.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from 10:1414, the Flat Hill Solar hearing.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Yes, Ken.
So, I'm sorry, we zipped through these, and I missed on September 22nd, the 221 White Street minutes approval based upon my catching up with the meeting. Yeah, my check, my catching up with the meeting. So I think I cut it to the half. I'm blocking this. I had approved it verbally, but I'm changing that to abstain, okay? The other one, I listened to the audio on, so I'm okay on that. Sorry about that.
Sure. Do you want me to go to committee reports, or do you want me?
If you still...
Okay. All right, we're into committee reports. MRPC, which is the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, we had a meeting last Tuesday. The MRPC is looking to move right now. They rent space from the Mart on Water Street, and they're looking to move into the four dealership that was on Main and Water, right on the corner. The Mart owns that as well, so they're looking to move into there. So the meeting was all about the financing for moving there. Our regularly scheduled monthly meeting is tomorrow evening. So I'll be at that meeting tomorrow. Capital planning, we started meeting again. We've had two meetings. Our first meeting was just introducing each other to the committee, and the pamphlets went out to all the department chairs and all the town committee people that sign up for funding. The capital plan looks at capital expenditures and then makes recommendations to the finance committee. So we had our first meeting to introduce. Our second meeting was last Tuesday before the MRPC meeting. And our DPW director was our first person talking about the road management. So all boards had to have their paperwork by last Friday, was the cutoff. So hopefully that will come in, and we'll start doing that. And as we get draft budgets, I'll bring them, just so you can see kind of what's on the agenda for the annual meeting. All right, next we have School Building Committee, Nathan Lockwood.
New big news from the School Building Committee. There was the groundbreaking a couple weekends ago, which went very well. You may have seen things about that in the paper. I believe Locks has been emailing out, at least to people in the schools, maybe broader, some of the construction progress. It's online at the website for the school project, and the Facebook page for the school project. Yeah, they're putting in, making progress. They've put in a lot of footings, started some of the first course of the parking lots and some of the, I think it's mostly parking lots that they want to have down before the winter. So I think all's well, as far as that goes. I believe there's, I've heard something about a meeting, not from the School Building Committee, but related to the project in general. There's going to be an interesting meeting coming up, I think, next week, related to decisions around the timing of a bond issue and the financing of the project. Maybe the selectmen have been talking about that, I don't know, but that's related to the project, and for those who are interested, something interesting to follow. And that's all I have for a few on that.
Okay. I just wanted to give them kudos, Nathan. I saw this newsletter on the construction progress.
Ah, okay, great.
That was very, I don't know if you all got that in your packets? Did they all get that in there? Which gives a really great synopsis as well, so just give them my kudos.
Yeah.
Because it just, the more data you have, the more information you share, the more educated people are. So I think that's a great tool, and I loved it.
That's great.
So just let them know. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I thought it was a great piece of data information.
Very good.
All right, open space.
I don't have any, I haven't heard anything from the Open Space Committee, so no news.
All right, Building Reuse Committee, Damon.
We have not met since our last meeting. Next meeting should be on Monday, next week.
Okay, and I feel like I'm chatty-catty today. But I have, I went to, last Sunday, I was driving home in Shirley, the old Shirley Municipal Building, that's right by Laura White School. Do you know where I am? On Route 2, you get off Route 2 on the Shirley exit, where the big solar is. Then you get to the end, right before you make the turn, was the old Shirley Municipal Building. And it was an open house. They made two condos out of it. So of course I stopped and went into the open house to see how the municipal building now became two beautiful condos. And they had, like, right when you walked in, it still said Shirley Municipal Building in the entryway that was the existing. So I was just thinking, even for the primary school, like, you could put probably six beautiful condos in there that might be an avenue as well, to put out to bid as RFP for a developer to make six condos or...
Maybe.
Luxury townhouses.
I haven't been able to attend the Building Reuse meetings in the past three months because of conflicts with us, but hopefully I'll make it to the one on Monday.
Yeah, but it really came out nice.
Oh, it kind of...
So, and that was just a recommendation to maybe have someone go over and look at the Shirley building. They did a great job.
Sure.
All right, Ken, MJTC.
The October meeting was, they didn't have it, so my next meeting will be November.
Okay, great, thank you. Ian Matthew, Agricultural Commission.
Yes, they met on the 16th, and there was their, the AdCom's first dispute, neighbor dispute. They had Brad Mitchell from the Farm Bureau come in as a liaison between the Butters and the farmer. And it was an interesting thing. It was nice and calm. Nobody got yelled and screamed.
Oh, nice.
It was nice, yeah, so.
So it worked out well?
Does it result?
I'm not so sure about that, but resolution is closer.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we still have 15 minutes, so we're going to move, if okay, the scenic road, Flat Hill and Northfield Road discussion, over to here, if that's all right with the board?
Mm-hmm. And my recommendation for that is, I know that there's some members of the viewing audience and commentary on the solar project who are also interested in the scenic road, so if we can tie it together and not make them sit through some of the other agenda items, it might make them a little bit happier.
Wonderful. So, and Marjorie emailed us today some information from the Historical Commission. Do you need them? All right. So who was running with this on the...
Well, I suggested that we ask the Historic Commission for their input.
All right. So they did write back.
They did write back.
Flat Hill, we know starts on Two Way, goes down, ends at Reservoir Road, butts Lake So what, do we want to add this to creating? For the warrant?
I guess, yeah, these write-ups just kind of go through some...
Help with the warrant, putting it, you know, creating the warrant to put in town meeting to make it a scenic road?
Yeah. Did we get the language of what the scenic road bylaw actually entails, so we know for sure what we're talking about? I vaguely know what it protects, generally within just a certain distance of the right of way, correct?
Correct. And it's stone walls and trees, essentially.
Yeah.
So if designated a scenic road, there's a prohibition on the removal of trees, and, you know, I think that there's generally some debate on that, but usually anything over two and a half caliber is what people consider trees. So when you see them plant new trees at shopping malls or subdivisions, those are usually two and a half caliber, so we're not talking anything massive. And stone walls. And if someone wishes to remove or disturb one or the other, they can come to the Planning Board, and there's a public hearing process. If there's a dead tree that's causing imminent public safety hazard, it can be removed automatically with the approval of the town's tree warden, and they have to submit information to the Planning Board retroactively, saying, "We took this down, this is why," provide photographs and all that kind of stuff.
Do you know what the distance is from the road, offhand?
Off the top of my head, I don't. It's usually only the right of way.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, which is, you know, usually from center line of the road, depending on the road, it's 25 feet in either direction, or greater, if you're on a more major road, or some of the smaller roads may only be 40-foot right of ways. But, you know, also, some of the smaller roads also probably only have between 18 and 22 feet of pavement.
Yep. So essentially protects the trees and stone walls directly adjacent to the road?
Correct. It protects the character of the road itself without infringing on property rights.
And did someone bring this in front of us, to recommend these as? Well, Matthew, did you bring that? You were interested in having Flat Hill.
I did not.
Okay. So how did these, I guess...
I think I suggested, it'd been talked about in the Historic Commission for a number of years, and it never really got acted on, so...
That's, I'm just trying to get the back information. Okay, so we're looking at these two. So if there were other roads that wanted to become, they would follow the same process?
Yeah, and right now, we do have Lancaster Ave and Lemmister Road.
As?
As scenic roads.
They're already...
Yeah. And I believe the history on that is, this is second-hand knowledge, but the town actually wanted to straighten those roads, or something of that nature, and passed Slattery, and the guys involved back then designated as scenic roads, the town couldn't straighten the roads.
Now, the process of this, will the residents that live on Northfield and Flat Hill Road get some type of literature that says, "We're looking to make this"?
It would be placed in the warrant.
Just on the warrant?
On the town meeting warrant. So, I mean, everybody in town gets a copy of the warrant, so that would be their notice. It requires a vote of town meeting, so, you know, they have the opportunity to show up and clearly voice their support or opposition. My understanding from conversations I've had with one or two people is there, there seems to be a general support for the designations, but, you know, it's one of those things where until you get onto town meeting floor, it's sometimes not an easy thing to discern.
Now, we wouldn't have a public hearing on these before town meeting, so we could try to rebut those concerns or educate...
You certainly could. I mean, it's one of those things, you can do more than is statutorily required. And if I recall the statute correctly, and again, I don't have the MGL memorized, but it's just a designation of town meeting. And there are, I think, three bodies, Conservation, Planning, and maybe the Historic Commission, who would make the recommendation and put it onto town meeting and be the proponent of the article. But I don't think that there's a requirement for a public hearing on the designation. The town meeting is the public hearing.
Okay. And where the town meeting is so far away, and we have these two, my request would be to have a public meeting, a public, just because I think it makes town meeting floor easier, when people understand it or educated to it and understand why, and what the impact to them living on Northfield and living on Flat Hill, what the ramification of this would be. So that would just be my recommendation, is to have a public hearing, and let them know and invite them to understand what it is we're doing.
Yeah, so I agree. I think that, I think that the proposal to have these made scenic roads is a great idea, and I think your proposal to have a public hearing to get folks' input on it and discuss it is a great one as well.
I support that both. And I guess I have another question, as far as, it's been brought up in relation to Flat Hill Solar, as far as views from the road. I mean, scenic, being a scenic road doesn't specifically protect the views.
Not to my knowledge.
But there is, is there a scenic vista bylaw as well?
Yeah, that's generally a zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And what would, you know, you, you could certainly research that. We could certainly look at putting something like that in. It's going to have zero effect on the Flat Hill Solar proposal as it exists. Excuse me. Because that proposal has already been filed. You can't retroactively apply it, so it may prevent some future development, or...
Yeah, I ask because when the last solar project came in on Pleasant Street, I was on Historic Commission at the time, not the Planning Board, and they, homeowners came and petitioned us for the stone walls and stuff that were in the fields, and they're going to do something about the vista. And we, I mean, it was mentioned, but I never got any real full explanation of what the scenic vista bylaw is, so if we could look into it, I mean...
I mean, it's a zoning bylaw, it's... Is that what Lancaster Ave falls under?
No, scenic road too.
It's just scenic road? So that, I'm just curious, because if the scenic road really only limits us to trees and stone walls, I thought there was a cell tower that was looking to go in over there, and it had to get verified that it could not be seen from Lancaster Ave, because it was a scenic road. But you're saying it only applies to stone walls and trees, so...
Yeah, that's my understanding, unless there's some additional, no, we, that proposal came forward, we got a letter about that cell tower, the Planning Board, asking if there's any historic impact of a cell tower there. I suggested we ask the Historic Commission. They deliberated on it and just sent over a reminder that it was a scenic road, and they would like to not see it impact the view. So it was a suggestion, not a binding.
It was a suggestion.
Okay.
So would a scenic vista be more binding?
I don't know. I'd like to learn more about that language.
Yeah, because Flat Hill definitely has a really nice view from the top of Flat Hill, so, you know, it would be nice to be able to preserve that, instead of putting up a big radio tower up there or something.
And do we have a letter? It says also, "Letter from Flat Hill Road resident, Mr. Ramsdale."
Yes.
Oh, it's the third one. I'm sorry, mine was stuck. Here we go.
I also believe late in the day, I got one on Northfield as well. Is that correct?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay.
That's okay.
All right, so...
Yeah, and we won't read them here, but these are really interesting, and if they go up on our website, I think folks will be really, I don't really enjoy reading them and learning some more about Lunenburg's history and of these roads in particular, but, you know.
Well, and I guess that's where my question is, so I would, I don't know, you know, financially, is there a way to mail these to everyone that lives on Flat Hill and everybody that, so they know? Because I don't know if people know that this is something we're looking to do.
I don't, I don't think we have the budget to do that, because I know that we talked about doing a mailing for the charrette. We couldn't.
Right, no, I know that's where...
So we can definitely post them on the website, and then, I don't know, we post our agenda, maybe we can put some of the agenda to refer people to the material or something, I don't know.
Okay.
We'll look at ways to get the word out. I mean, town meeting's not going to be till May-ish anyway, so we'll, we'll figure out between now and then how to get everybody involved.
So as far as action items, it sounds like we're going to schedule a public hearing. What kind of timeframe do you have in mind for that, Joanna?
I mean, the earlier, the better, because as we get closer to town meeting, I feel like we're having meeting after meeting to get the stuff ready for town meeting.
Sure.
So if this is something that we can do now and be ahead of the game, and have those set and put aside, ready for town meeting, yeah.
I would actually suggest you probably want to wait until at least after the New Year. If you have a meeting now, there's a sense of immediacy when you start having a public meeting like that. So the holidays happen, and everybody forgets about it, and if the people are actually in support of it, you want them to show up and voice their support. So if you maybe have it after the New Year, you might, you know, sort of spark their interest, because that's when all of the town meeting stuff sort of starts to ramp up. So if you look at, you know, I know it's not fun to come out in January, February, but that timeframe might actually work to drum up the support. That would be my suggestion, rather than trying to do it now, because, you know, once we schedule, it's going to be close to Thanksgiving, and then it's all kind of downhill for everybody's memory from there.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And in terms of, so when we do schedule that meeting for that time, will we have, like, is it a, will we have whatever, we're going to, the wording for whatever, we're going to put on the warrant in place?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, it's a pretty standard warrant article. It's, you know, per the MGL site, the Planning Board was just to designate, or we, you know, town meeting is asked to designate Northfield Road a scenic road. And then I would do them separately, just so they're not tied together if one group is for and one's against.
Great. And you're going to, you'll pull that together for the meeting?
Sure.
Awesome. Thanks.
All right. Is there any other dialogue, any other conversation on the scenic roads? Any from the public on the scenic road?
I just have a...
You have to come to the mic, sorry. So the people at home can hear you.
I'm Mary Ellen Ramsdale of 44 Coralin Circle, and I did the information. I spent time at the Historical Society and was talking with Mr. Larkin with regards to Flat Hill Road. And it is really interesting. There's a lot of black history there, and I don't think anybody realized it. Our Historical Society has a little tiny folder of black history, and I really think that should be, you know, investigated further. One of the residents was Nam Hazard, his name was, and some, I think we have a road named Hazard, don't we? Hazard Road?
Hazard, I haven't, I haven't...
Maybe not. But he was a young boy and was kidnapped during the, in 1839, and he actually was rescued on order of the governor here, but he was taken to Virginia to be put into slavery. And it was interesting reading this, because north-central Massachusetts had the largest population of the black community at the time in Massachusetts. And primarily, it was here, in Lunenburg. And primarily, it was Flat Hill Road. Now, Flat Hill Road only went from Elmwood to Page Street and Watts. It did not go further down. And the, the black community seemed to inhabit the end of, well, actually, it was Ramsdale, who is one of the people on the plaque here, that farm, the end of his farm on that side, which happens to be, the Ramsdale Farm happens to be where Flat Hill, our village, our little village of Flat Hill is right now. So I just found the whole thing extremely interesting, and I hope that you would consider that this is not only scenic, it is historic. And really, I would, I would push to get some type of plaque stating that. I do have a map from 1870, and I'll give it to Marjorie. It does show Flat Hill circled here, and she can pass it, I only have the one map. But it was on the 1870 map. But the black community was here from the early 1700s through, you know, the 1900s, and of course now. So it's, it's very, very old, this, this information.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
Well, thank you for researching and taking the time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'll work on Northview.
You're working on that one next. Perfect.
Yeah, it was a great write-up she did on that.
Yeah, she did. Thank you. Beautiful, man. All right, any other public discussion? All right, thank you. Okay, and it's now 7 o'clock. So I would, we have to come out of scheduled, go into public, and then go back to our public?
No, it's a public meeting. You're just going to take a motion to reopen, to reopen the continued hearing.
Okay. I would make a motion to go into the continuation of public hearing for 322 Flat Hill.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So we, this is a continuation of the public hearing we had on Flat Hill, worked, Flat Hill, the solar going in. I just need to find my... No, I just wanted to get my minutes from the last meeting. Okay, we had the hearing on October 14th and it was pushed over to here. Do we have new material? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, where did we go here? When y'all did that last thing? Okay, thank you, Eric. So where we left off, we, as I understand it, our peer review from Whitman and Bingham has not finished his report. So we don't have our peer review engineers' final report as of yet. So that's something at the end, my chair's a little long. That's something at the end we want to think about if we are going to continue this again. Waiting for that, but that's just one of the items that we want to put on the sidebar as outstanding. Did we have action items other than that, that we were investigating from the 14th meeting?
The Board requested some items which are included in the material that was emailed to you and was just handed to you. There is several letters from the applicant. One, the date, dated the 15th, which was distributed probably on the 16th, outlining some of the applicant's further rebuttal to items brought up during the public hearing, including some of the materials the Board requested, distance to the closest home. There is a plan outlining what a larger scale development on the property would look like and a property showing the shadow scene or the shade scene as discussed at that meeting. There is a letter outlining the project in general and an additional support from the applicant. There is a response letter to Whitman and Bingham which covers the items in the original review letter as well as an attachment of supporting documentation for those answers. There's also some public comment that is attached from Mr. Whalen. So I don't know if the Board would like the applicant to review the materials that he submitted. I don't believe that the abutters have seen the majority of this. A good chunk of it came in as of Friday afternoon. So it was emailed to the Board this morning and at the same time to Whitman and Bingham.
Okay. I just want to say that myself, Nathan and Damon did go out to the site on Saturday at 3:00 PM. And then separately, we went down Cortland and down there to look at both angles. So we did do that on Saturday, 3:00 PM, we did that. So, and Mr. Conway, if you would like to come up and just talk from me to where we are today, from the last meeting and what, I know you had neighbors over, so if you want to address the Board?
Sure. Hi, Mike Conway, 322 Flat Hill Road. Would you like a presentation of the material that's been submitted since the last meeting or just general comments summing up what's happened since, since then?
I would do, because I don't know that the residents received all this great information that you gave us. So if you kind of just want to recap some of those bullets that were addressed at the last meeting that you talked about here?
Sure. So, starting with the questions from the Board, coming out of the last meeting, we had a question that I was unable to quantify about the distance from, from the array to the closest neighboring structure. That it was 229 feet, 10 inches, as currently proposed. And the distance of both, the distance of both existing vegetative buffers to the, to the end, from, from the north side of 322 Flat Hill Road to the south side of the vegetative buffer on 44 Cortland, that's 143 feet, 8 inches. And moving eastward towards, towards Flat Hill Road, the vegetative buffer is wider. That's from the north side of 322 Flat Hill Road to what is listed as Zero Cortland, but it's the common area. That's 266 feet, 9 inches of existing vegetative buffer. The other drawing that was provided was, the other two drawings that were provided were, one, as requested, a shade scene showing as the trees currently exist on the south side where, where the southern shading goes. And that's just sort of to inform where you could, where else you could move the project on the property without sort of handicapping its production in terms of the current layout of the trees on the south side. And the third drawing would be an overlay that sort of demonstrates what this system would look like as a 1-megawatt system to, to address a lot of the comparisons between the Pleasant Street site, which I believe is 1-megawatt, and the Chase Road site, which is even more than that. One of the main clarifications I wanted to make or, you know, just something I wanted to pinpoint a little more was that when we're talking about screening and we're talking about visibility and sightlines, that some of the, some of the comparisons to those, to those larger sites aren't, I don't want to say applicable, but are not comparable in terms of, in terms of the general footprint of the project. So that drawing was, I mean, it was just meant to be, meant to be demonstrative of, demonstrative of that. Second thing I have is the responses to Whitman and Bingham's third-party engineering review. The first, should I go through them item, item?
Yep, if you want to.
Sure. The first is, was a question about ZBA permit for dimensional variation. That permit being 50 kilowatts and the, the size of this permit being 75 kilowatts. So the zoning board decision was a dimensional variation delivered on two issues, the lot size and the property line setbacks. And although the system size discussed at the hearing, was discussed at the hearing, the ZBA ultimately decided not to provide a variation for the system size which have, which would have deemed the application small-scale ground mounted. So if the Board would have said, all right, we're giving you variation on, on system size because you're 50 kilowatts, that would have been saying, we're going to tuck your 50 kilowatts into small-scale ground mounted, which would circumvent coming to this Board and doing development plan set and sort of all the rest of the stuff that goes along with large-scale ground mounted. So that's not what happened. Instead, the ZBA provided relief on the setbacks in the lot size while still requiring the application to follow the large-scale ground mount development plan process, which is size agnostic over, over 10 KW. Second, second bullet point is the evidence of utility approval. I included in the package just the, the interconnection service agreement with Unitel, which is just a mutually executed contract that says, we've studied your project, it's not going to cause any detrimental effects to the system. Here's your contract for interconnecting to our system. Third item is an estimate for providing a surety for, you know, if the, if the company goes belly up, the town is responsible for removing this. That was included. It's, it's not very extensive because it's such a small footprint of a system and actually, aside from the, the cost of actually getting some mini excavators and some man-hours out there with, once you bring all that stuff to the scrapyard, the town actually probably pulls a profit by doing that, so. Number four is a clarification for the northern setback. Whitman and Bingham was asking to clear that up. He said it looked like it was about 35 feet. He was using a scaled plan. I scaled it out on CAD on the computer. It's 30 feet. Number five, it was a request for a 600, 600-foot-per-inch location map is, as required by the, the development plan bylaw. That was addressed in the initial, in the initial application package. It's sort of, it's an inset on the second page, so it's a little hard to see, but, but it is, it is in there. Number six was fencing and signage. That there was, Whitman and Bingham pointed out that there were, there were placards included in the, in the document, but didn't know where they were supposed to go. So this just clarifies where they go. Number seven is pictures of the proposed building site and surrounding properties. There's just a list of pictures. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
So, in your letter, you said that you reached out to your neighbors multiple times and even offered to put up, I think you said blue tarps or something like that?
Yeah.
So that they could see what the visual impact could potentially be and help to designer and provide inputs for whatever kind of screening? Did you get any kind of cooperation at all or?
No, but I, I, I understand that strategy of not compromising. I mean, they've sort of taken a hard line of just sort of opposing this application and they want it to be either withdrawn or, or to be not approved. So I, I understand, you know, trying to come to a compromise isn't, they don't feel that's in their best interest. And that's my interpretation of it. I don't want to try to put words in their mouth, but...
Okay. So, so as far as collaboration is concerned, you have reached out, you've extended offers and you've gotten no, no cooperation. Would you summarize it that way?
Yeah, we had, there was the tarp, which, you know, the idea was to put up a big tarp at, at nine feet that looks like, you know, is really noticeable, even more noticeable than the panels are going to be. And then everyone can go back to their house, go to the second floor, go to the roof, wherever, go wherever you want on your property and take pictures. And then let's come back together and optimize the screening layout and say, all right, from this angle, you know, we feel like we're going to need not just one evergreen tree, we're going to need two back-to-back because it's really thin here or, you know, just, to me, it was the most constructive, inclusive way to, to come to the best screening pan, plan possible. Short of that, I went up to a landscape architect, you know, independent of that and just said, give me the Cadillac, give me the best screening plan you've ever done for anyone. And offered that and that, there was some candor around that, but nothing in the way of reaching an agreement, unfortunately. And third, I offered the notion of sliding the system down closer to my house. I have a layout that shows, you know, the panels, that has slid the system down eastward so that it's closer to my house at any point in time than it's closer to anyone else's and didn't get any bites on that either, so.
Can you actually do that? Can you actually slide it towards your house or would you be, you'd be impeding, impeding on your shade line a little bit? Is that what you're planning?
Shade, I wouldn't be impeding on. I'd be, I'd have to go back through conservation.
Oh, because you're going to, you'd be impacting the, the no-build buffer then?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're going to say you're, you're not that far from the no-build buffer as it is.
Yeah, I'd have to go back to them. I could deal with the shade. The shade I could mitigate.
Okay.
But I'd have to go back to conservation, yeah. But, and, you know, to the extent that it gets the project done, I would do it.
And you recommended that as well and you got, did you get any feedback on that? No, no feedback on that either?
No.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I had.
Well, I, so, am I understanding that that residents came on Saturday? You had balloons?
Yes, it was not Saturday, last Mon, the Monday, you guys came on Saturday, they came the Monday before.
The holiday?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and did people go back and could they see the balloons from their homes, from the windows?
I don't know. They didn't comment on whether or not they looked for the balloons from their windows. I think the balloons was more of a while you're on my property type of view. I think it would be more difficult to see the balloons than it would be to see the tarp. Tarp's definitely more noticeable. The balloons, I don't know if that's a good enough, a good enough approximation of what it looks like through the woods. They're just balloons.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one, one question, just a clarification. So number four, the northern setback clarification, it says, really dumb question. I mean, I do sort of know north. I just want to make sure this is, I'm thinking the right north here. So the, this gap here is, is a minimum of 30 feet?
Closest one, yeah.
Okay.
On the north side. And they, you know, they go up from there, but the closest one is at 30 feet.
Gotcha. Thank you. I may have some more questions. I think I want to hear, hear more of the public feedback before really digging into it much.
Okay.
I'm ready for public feedback as well.
Okay. I just had one question on the mailings. Did we look into the mailing?
We did. It appears that there was, the commonly owned land is still on record as owned by, and I always get the gentleman's name incorrect.
Robert M. Hicks?
Robert, the Robert M. Hicks Incorporated. So when the project was completed, for one reason or another, the town clerk, the town assessor has never had something come through the Registry of Deeds showing a transfer of ownership of the common land from the Robert Hicks Incorporated to the association. So the mailings were going to the Robert Hicks, Robert M. Hicks Incorporated.
Okay. All right. Just so things clarity on.
Just out of curiosity, as you pursue those, the assessors, I'm just, so how does that work if the assessor has, the Hicks Corporation is the owner of record? Have they been sending the tax bills for that parcel to the Hicks Corporation?
I think it's, it's more complicated than that because it's, excuse me, again, it's essentially a condo association.
Okay.
So all of that property is jointly owned common land, so it doesn't get individually assessed. It gets processed through the 45 individual tax bills is the way that I understand it. And that's, you know, my planner understanding of how assessing taxes works.
Okay.
So there's probably much more detail to it, but I'm not going to wade into that pond.
No, that's, that's fine. Thanks, Adam.
So Mr. Hicks was not getting a yearly quarterly bill for the tax?
Gotcha.
It was among the residents.
Among the residents. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. And now, do we have feedback from the public? No, and just state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Bealan and I'm here on behalf of Michael and Mary Ellen Ramsdale who live at 44 Cortland Circle. And I do have a letter to give to the applicant. And I'm the one responsible for that submission, yes, today. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at it.
It's a big yellow packet.
I was telling Adam when I first got here, I'm on the zoning board in Falmouth, so I can certainly appreciate getting something last minute, so I'll try to hit the highlights. And of course, if you have any questions, just stop me, interrupt me. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
So obviously you know, and I also wasn't here the last hearing, so if I'm duplicating arguments that were made or opposition, then you can say, we've already heard it, we got it. So as you know, the applicant needs a special permit to conduct the, the large-scale solar farm that is presently before you. It's the applicant's burden to establish that the relief can, can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. So obviously you know, your special permit criteria takes into different elements, different considerations, as detailed in the memorandum. We think that the applicant hasn't met those criteria, particularly with respect to two items. The first is that the specific site of the project is an appropriate location. Obviously, this Board knows that it's located in a Residence A and outlining zoning district. The site is the 13.1 acres. I know that the applicant has received some determination from the zoning board. We believe that may not be sufficient. I know that's beyond your purview, but it's for allowing them, permitting to allow them to construct on a 13.1 acre site. It also allows them to have the specifics, setbacks that they propose. So in essence, this project is going to be cited on a lot that's too small acreage-wise and dimensions-wise under the bylaw, under what town meeting intended the bylaw to be. So that's why they're here and that's why they were before the zoning board. As you know, a small-scale solar farm can be built as of right in the Residence A. As you know, a small-scale solar farm can be built as of right in the Residence A district and the outlining district. So anything up to a 10 kilowatt, small-scale solar farm, they would not even need to be here, or potentially I would have to review again before the zoning board. So they won't have needed any relief, it's as of right. The approximate setback, and of course, I don't have the benefit of some of the materials that were submitted today, and I would like to look at those dimensions and give you some feedback and my clients an opportunity to review those as well. But I think the setback distance he just said was 30 feet approximately from the abutting line. So that's obviously much smaller, substantially less than the 200 feet that's allowed under the zoning bylaw. I know that the ZBA touched on that, but as you'll see in the memo, that's actually, I believe, within your purview, not the ZBA's purview. I know dimensional setbacks usually require relief from the zoning board, but this bylaw, your solar energy bylaw specifically provides that it's your determination whether or not a smaller, narrower buffer is adequate. And that's upon demonstration by the applicant. So the applicant would need to provide you with materials and information that makes you feel okay, that, let me just stack that under, that it is sufficient, the buffer that they're providing is sufficient. Again, I know that there were some materials submitted today as to the buffer, landscaping plan perhaps, but we haven't seen those. So again, we would like to look at them. Just to make sure I'm hitting all my points. And I would like to as well see the shading plan that was put before you, because to this point, and in the materials that we reviewed, there was no demonstration or explanation as to why this solar farm would be cited so far back on the property and further to the right, closest to that northern property line, as cited, and again, mentions would be helpful, it's closer to my client's residence than it is to the applicant's residence. So, you know, clearly, there has to be some justification for that, that buffer, and narrowing that buffer, which we don't believe has been met or has been established. And again, that's the applicant's burden to establish that. The second major prong of this is the adverse effect on the residential neighborhood. The applicant has to show that the project will not adversely affect the residential neighborhood. Distilled to its essence, this project is a commercial enterprise. I know it's been described as an investment. It's a corporation that's going to be the owner of this. Flat Hill Community Solar, it's incorporated with the Secretary of State, and it's a money-making enterprise at the end of the day. The applicant has stated that he would only be using three kilowatts, so that means that 72 kilowatts is going to be sold. That's obviously a substantial amount relative to, you know, one property can use three, now we're selling 72. So it's a commercial endeavor, and the land court has recently upheld a case, and it's cited in the materials, I brought a couple of copies if you'd like to see them as well. Judge Sands of the land court upheld that it was reasonable for a town to separate commercial solar farm of this type from a residential district. It's a 2014 case. Some of this law is new, as you can imagine. I would also like to touch on the fact that property values would not be, or the representation, I should say, that property values won't be impacted by this. The document relied upon by the applicant says that there's no showing or research has shown that roof-mounted solar panels have no impact on property values. The same report that he cites to, and I included it in the packet, says that ground-mounted solar panels, there's no research to say whether or not those have an impact on property values. So I think for the applicant to say that there will be no impact is disingenuous. I can't say whether there will be, but that's something that's beyond, beyond a layperson's knowledge, and they can't, or the applicant isn't in the position to say there won't be any effect on property values here.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Maybe I misheard the minutes, but I didn't recall him saying that. I thought that what he said is there was no proof or evidence that there would be a reduction in the value of properties, which he would still be accurate on, correct?
Well, that's true. That would be accurate.
Correct, because there's no evidence one way or the other, right?
Right, right. It was my.
Wanted to clarify the point.
It was my understanding, I read the same minutes, that it was a quote, and I think there was a quote in the materials submitted to the ZBA, that I explicitly, I think, pulled out in the memorandum, and it said that there would be no impact. And so that's what I was saying too, but it could be some stuff.
And just for my clarity, because I had written it, and then Adam did as well, I think in our bylaw, and I don't have it off the top of my head, but we have a 25 or a setback, and then we have a buffer.
Right.
Two separate things. Because you could have a 30-acre lot and put one acre of solar panels that you have to buffer, that, not the whole lot, that buffer of solar panels. So we have two different dimensions when you talk of, we have the setback and then the buffer.
Right.
Okay. Because the setback's not 200.
Right. The setback would be the 25 feet or whatever is allowed for a structure under the zoning bylaw.
Exactly.
And I think it is, I want to say 25, but.
That's what I think.
Yes.
And then the buffer was 200 feet around the panels themselves.
Right, right.
Okay.
Just as demonstrated by the bylaw tonight, as far as whether there's an adverse effect on the residential neighborhood, even the discussion earlier talked about whether it's a historical street. I know that there was some conversation about scenic vistas, whether that takes that into account. I think that the development plan review explicitly provides that that's within this board's purview. It says that the purpose of this provision of the development plan review is to promote and protect the natural, environmental, scenic, and aesthetic qualities of the town of Lunenburg. So although it might be limited, and I don't know, to tell you the truth, I'm in the same boat as Adam, whether it extends beyond as far as it's a scenic route, scenic and aesthetic qualities are within the purview of the development plan review that the applicant must satisfy before this board tonight. The other thing that I touched on at length is my memo is the insufficiency of the application materials. Obviously, my client and I would like another opportunity to review the materials that have been submitted, and we haven't had that chance yet. And then I just, as I close up, just wanted to mention a few discrepancies that we observed in going through the materials. The first is the project size, the physical acreage. I know that the project has ballooned in size from 50 kilowatts to 75 kilowatts before you. But the first, as ZBA, the applicant said, well, this is going to take up a quarter acre. That was the testimony. That's in the ZBA decision. The last hearing, he said it's going to be about three quarters of an acre. And in the materials submitted, it says, well, it's going to be about half an acre. So obviously, it's important to know, is it going to be a quarter of an acre or three quarters of an acre? And what acreage was utilized in developing the stormwater drainage analysis and having, you know, your engineers peer review? What exactly was the acreage? And what was the project size? And what is proposed to be built there exactly? There's been different representations about that. The second is that there's some conflicting information regarding the size, the kilowatts. I know before the zoning board, it was 50 kilowatts, before this board, 75 kilowatts. But on the plans submitted, it says that the plans are for a solar farm that could produce 82.35 kilowatts. So again, it's important to know, is that what's being proposed? And is that what the applicant is seeking to build here? And then the final, the final kind of information that we'd like some further clarification on would be the excerpt in the environmental impact statement relating to wetlands. I know that you said, touched on Conservation Commission. I don't know how detailed the touching on was, if they've gone before Conservation Commission, couldn't tell that from the materials. But there was some discussion in there. The applicant mentions that there was a quote-unquote "wetlands walk," that there was an expert who offered an opinion. We haven't seen the opinion, we haven't seen the report. So as a neighbor, immediately abutting this project, we think that that's important and should be provided as part of the public hearing record. In closing, I would just like to say, the Ramstucks would request at this point, if you were inclined to rule tonight, that you would deny the application based on the information that's been presented to you. And at a minimum, they would like the opportunity to review the additional materials that have been submitted. And I also just want to touch on the applicant standing up here and saying, you know, he's made every effort to contact the neighbors, and I don't doubt that's true. I know the neighbors have gone on the site. I know my clients have had communications with them. But as far as, I know he said, you know, that we're taking a hard line and oppose that. And I think, as a lawyer, you always say to your client, it makes sense to talk. And that's the same conversation I would have with my client. I'm sure that they'd be receptive to that. And they certainly would be interested in sliding the system down. I know that there was some conversation about that tonight. So we obviously accept, we want to start a conversation, and everybody's just trying to do what's in the best interest of the community, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Any questions?
This is just an FYI-type thing, right? Okay. Just making sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Tom Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue, also a member of the Board of Selectmen. Before the board, I just want to remind people, some people on this board were there during the arduous history of this bylaw that is now being tested before you. And it came as a large, large battle from two commercial solar farm projects, as you all know, on Chase Road and on Pleasant Street. And the three major elements, as though, of the people who were opposed to those projects, were of course that they were cited on residential properties, that they were too close to the properties themselves, and that they were too large. So setbacks, size of the project, and location. This board, through public hearings, through a lot of work, changed the bylaw, and town meeting passed it as we see it now in the protective bylaws. And now the first project that's come up before it, in the special permit process, which at town meeting was discussed pretty fully, as well as the whole bylaw. Those three elements that people fought for and thought were protected are now, each one of them being challenged in a negative way. I mean, they're looking to build something on, something that's barely half of what was talked about as the land area needed, so 13 acres versus 20, which is explicitly stated in the bylaw. They're looking for variances on buffers around the project, and it's in a residential area. And I see, from what I've read and what I've done research on the project itself, agree with the previous speaker, that I think, first of all, that the application is severely incomplete, and more importantly, that in order to get those kind of variances, they would have to make a case that they are needed and there's no other way to do the project, or that even that the project should be done on that property, and I don't think they've supplied any of that. So again, at the risk of causing another furor in another neighborhood of which this bylaw was designed, explicitly designed to protect, I would urge this board, I think this project is not even, it's not even, it's way beyond the pale of what they're asking for. I mean, half the size, seven times, seven times the capacity of the solar project than what is deemed a large-capacity project in that area. And I don't, I surely think that being that close to the property lines and so far away from the applicant's own property and pushed in somebody else's, even if that area of the other property is not developed, I don't know what it is. I have not walked the site myself. But even if it was, at some point, they may want to use it. I think this is clearly the wrong project, and I think that the other previous two fights really should bring this board, hopefully bring this board to conclude that this is the wrong project for this site, and I hope you do deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please.
I'm Greg Kelly. I'm from 45 Cortland Circle. You know, I guess first of all, I just want to say on a personal level, I appreciate and respect the board's approach on these issues. I think both, frankly, my wife and I are newer to this community. We moved down here from Vermont, I don't know, I think it was about 16 months ago, give or take.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
We love the community, and we love the area that we bought our home in, on Cortland Circle. But I appreciate the way that the board has, you know, really allowed the time for this kind of discussion, both in our last meeting with all of you, and then again tonight. I've never felt rushed, and I just appreciate that. And, you know, I think in situations like this, it's very easy for people to misinterpret people's words and actions and conduct and so forth, and certainly anything I say tonight isn't intended to be adversarial or disrespectful. You know, obviously, I, like many of my neighbors, am very much opposed to what Mr. Conway's trying to do in close proximity to where I live. And I guess I'm, I have a number of things I want to say, and then I ultimately have a question I want to pose to the board. But I guess first of all, you know, obviously, I think the attorney representing my neighbor, obviously, touched upon a lot of the points that we're all feeling, and I suspect that there's probably going to be less discussion tonight than there was last time, because a lot of us have already discussed these points with you. But in my mind, again, just to kind of look at the bigger picture here, you know, it just seems to me that the board is being presented with a decision that you have to make, which is obviously governed by law. And I know for me personally, I've spent most of my professional life enforcing the law. And it's very, it's black and white to me, because when I sit back and I look at the issues here and what's been proposed, as the attorney had said, it is so far outside of the bounds of what the law requires, I'm almost a little perplexed that he's even brought it to you. He also made the statement when he was speaking earlier that, and I don't want to quote him, but basically, he talked about this meeting that he had informationally and the opportunity that we had to go and to talk with him. And I, like several of my neighbors, went and we did talk with him that day. And, you know, obviously, despite our strong opposition, we felt it was appropriate to have that dialogue and to hear him out, and we did that. So although he's indicated, without me quoting him, that he felt that we were uncooperative, I'd have to beg to differ on that. I think that we were open-minded, I think we were very respectful, I think we heard him out. And quite frankly, despite the fact that we feel that we have been wronged by a lack of, you know, him providing us with notice and some of the other things that he said and is seeking to do, we went and heard him out anyway. I think we've been very open-minded about those things, but obviously, our opinions are unwavering. So I guess in kind of looking at this, you know, there's obviously the legal issues, there are procedural issues, and then there are issues with the application, deficiencies or inaccuracies, whatever they are. So kind of looking at that, again, you know, the fact that the bylaws require 20 or more acres in 4.15, 4.3, and he only has, you know, obviously, well less than that, and has earmarked, what, I think it was approximately five acres, give or take, and I forget the exact figure for the solar farm, obviously, he's well below that requirement. In speaking about its effects on our neighborhood, again, you know, it's a very scenic neighborhood, it's a residential neighborhood, it has historical significance, as was testified about tonight. It's a rural and agricultural area, and he's proposing to put in a commercial project. Again, it just, obviously, it's not consistent with the bylaws. He has approximately 30 feet from the boundary line, despite a requirement for 200 feet of buffer around his property as outlined in 4.15, 4.7. And then, again, there's the issue, which hasn't been reiterated tonight, but of the wetlands, that are owned by our association, as I understand it. And he's encroaching upon the buffer zone for those wetlands. And again, we also have recreational trails in that vicinity. It seems to me, anyway, that it's contrary to 4.15, 4.3 subsection 1. One other thing that hasn't really been discussed, and I feel like for us, we're reacting, we haven't really been able to digest the full scope of what's been proposed because we didn't have due notice, or, you know, I don't feel he provided due diligence, I don't feel that he's acted in good faith, and we weren't provided with notice about this application. But there's the issue of noise. These farms do generate some noise, and there's that humming noise, as I understand it. Given the fact that he's seeking to put this in well within the 200-foot required buffer zone, I have to ask the question. I would ask that the board would require that he conduct appropriate noise impact study done by some sort of a third party that would review what in fact the impact would be for my neighbors, for myself, because again, we're in close proximity to that. And, again, the requirements for that are in 4.15.4.9 subsection J. So then there are the procedural issues. We weren't notified as an association, despite the fact that we own the common land, we're butters. We weren't notified to that effect. And it seems to me, and, again, perhaps I misunderstood, but he brought it to the ZBA initially, instead of to you. It really should have come to you first, as I understand it. And then the application. He had deficiencies, and perhaps it could be said that they were inaccuracies in his application packet. He lacks specificity in terms of, you know, what the measurements were, the distances initially, from his site to our different respective residences. The photographs that he provided to you were misleading, because, you know, he couldn't even tell you when they were taken. He got them offline. And it seemed to me, from what it looked like in the photos versus what my property looks like now, it certainly seems like that was taken some time before. There was the concern that we have about its impact on our home values, and that was discussed. Obviously, I won't reiterate that and take up your time with it now, but that's very much of concern to me. And, you know, I guess, in totality, I mean, it seems to me that you have to make a decision based upon his request. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a homeowner. I have my own concerns. That governs how I feel about this proposal. But it seems to me that, you know, legally, the right thing to do is to deny his application and to put it to rest, because it's so far outside of the boundaries of what the law requires. It seems to me, and, again, John Whelan spoke about the intent at the last meeting, and what the thought process was when those laws were written. And, again, I won't reiterate it, but it was very clear what the intent was. And as a gentleman spoke about tonight, the impact from a different project, and that's why these things came about. But ultimately, you know, you have to make a decision based on the laws. You have to make a decision, I would hope, based on what's right. And if what he was asking was reasonable, it was, you know, perhaps 190 feet of buffer zone as opposed to 200, or he had 18 acres as opposed to 20, I could see where those requests from him would be entertained. But it's so far outside of the boundaries, I don't see, I'm perplexed at why we're here. But I would ask that you deny the project, because that's what the law requires, because in my mind, it seems to me that's what's right. But, again, there's a bigger issue here in terms of the overall principle. And this, you know, when somebody pushes a law and the case is weak, it makes for bad-case law. Because of the principle here, although we are very reasonable people, we're left really in a situation where we have to, even though, say, for example, we may not be argumentative, we may not be obstructionist, we may not be, you know, apt to seek out legal remedies, the reality is, this is the kind of case that really should be tested, if that is ultimately granted, because it's so far outside of the boundaries. And I think, frankly, for all the reasons that have been discussed, you know, it seems to me that it's just the right thing to do for us to, you know, obviously feel that way. But I would just ask that you deny his application for all of those reasons, because that's what the law requires. I think the law should be enforced to protect our community, not just here, where we live, but for those applications that would be brought before you in the future. Because this will set a precedent for you, one way or the other, where either you're going to hold people accountable to what the law requires, or they will feel, because of legal precedent, that they can circumvent those laws, even when it's blatant and well outside of the parameters of what's required. So, again, I really appreciate sincerely, you know, the opportunity that you've given to us to share our feelings, and I would just ask that you deny his application. Thank you. Oh, actually, can I ask one question, though? Do you mind if I, in a, understand the spirit in which I ask the question, but given the fact that for an application like this, it is so far outside of the parameters of what's required by the law, can you tell me why potentially it would be granted to Mr. Conway? Do you understand my question? I mean, why would the Board grant somebody who's filed that kind of an application, potentially? And you can speak in general terms, it doesn't have to be this here, but why would a Board grant approval if, again, the requirements are so far outside of what's been proposed in a project?
What, you were whispering something?
No.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So, yeah, it's a very good question. I think, to answer that question, you've got to put it into context, and I think the first thing I would say is, the law isn't quite as black and white as what you're describing. The reality is, if you look at the full framework of the law, it includes the very special permit process that we are involved in now. If you look at the framework of regulation of solar installations in Massachusetts law, the base-level framework is extremely permissive. It's comparable to Mass. law regarding agricultural activity, which is extremely permissive, permits agricultural activity in all types of zones, puts significant restrictions on municipalities' ability to restrict agricultural activity. So that's kind of the base level. But it does provide towns and municipalities with an ability to perform some level of regulation of the activity. And that's what our bylaw, that's one of the main goals of our bylaws, to do that for some of the purposes that have been talked about, you know, protecting neighbors, health and public safety, that sort of thing. You know, aesthetics, property values, all of those things. So in terms of the history of the bylaw in Lunenburg, I think most people are aware that this bylaw was a relatively recent thing, as was the Massachusetts law on its topic, solar thing, solar installations. And we were fortunate to be, we were unfortunate in that we misunderstood the nature of the Massachusetts law originally, and had to react quickly in order to protect the interests of, you know, Lunenburg residents, or, you know, what we perceived and which town meeting upheld were the interests of them. And so we put together what, I think, for the time we had, and, you know, what the situation called for, an effective bylaw for what was demanded. It's not a perfect bylaw, and it's not, again, it's not black and white. It exists within a larger structure, which includes special permitting processes like this. And it's, in my opinion, a good thing that it does, because we knew, when we created this bylaw, that although we were achieving a lot of our goals regarding regulation of very large facilities, and we were achieving our goals, providing a level of surety around roof-mounted and very small-scale facilities, there was a big gray area that was going to be much more difficult to figure out the parameters for. We didn't have the time to do that. And so that was left to the special permit process, essentially, to adjudicate that. As we can all, you know, all of us here on both sides of the issue, and us here on the Board, I think, agree, you know, the more guidance our bylaws give us, the more they make it, you know, it's often much more comfortable, because we can, you know, talk in very clear terms. So I'll give other people a chance to say, but that's kind of, just kind of the background I would provide to answer your question.
Sure. Thank you.
And to add to that, with the shades of gray, if, say, all you people showed up in support of his project, presented like it was, and that would be a case for, yes, we would consider something that's, you know, so far out of scheme of what the bylaw says. Because when you're writing a bylaw, and we're finding this out with the village district bylaw, it's very tough to imagine, okay, all these sites that I'm thinking about, this might possibly happen, and all the hypothetical situations of what needs to happen there, screening, buffering, setbacks. It's tough to encapsulate all the things that really need to be thought of when you're writing the bylaw. So that's why we have the special permit process, where a site doesn't comply, someone comes in, explains the situation. If the butters show up in renouncing support of it, then, yeah, then that's when we would look for something that far off.
I understand. And, you know, I understand, obviously, you have to provide him or an applicant with, you know, due process and reviewing their application and so forth. And I understand where you're coming from. And I hope you don't take the spirit with which I asked the question out of its context, because I certainly mean no disrespect toward anyone, truly, in asking the question. I guess what I would, you know, close in saying is, again, and when you look at criminal law and how that is interpreted by the courts, again, you know, you're looking at the elements of the law, and whether or not the elements are met. But you're also looking at the reasonable standard, if you will. And I'm sure, I assume Mr. Bernie, Bernie could speak to that. But, basically, you know, you're looking at what's reasonable within those parameters. What's reasonable as it relates to somebody's conduct? And, you know, here, it just seems like the project, what's been proposed, is so far outside of the norms. It just isn't reasonable, and then that, in conjunction with the other procedural and application issues, is troubling for me. I guess one last request that I would make to you, and I would certainly request, like I said, to be very clear, that the application be denied. But having said that, if, for some reason, you did ultimately grant some variation of his, which is, of his proposal, of his application, I would ask that you specifically require that he not put up artificial screening. You look at projects like the one in Shirley, where they have a fence, and it has some sort of a black mesh over the fence. It looks terrible. You know, we have a lot of wildlife in the area. I think it would be, certainly wouldn't be aesthetically pleasing, but it also would interfere with the movement of deer and other wildlife that we routinely see in that area. So what I would ask is that you would require that he put in extensive natural barriers to prevent it, to as much as possible, keep us from seeing what he's put in. But secondly, I mean, he had said before he didn't want to put it close to his residence in the last meeting, and I'm paraphrasing now, but because he didn't want to have to look at it, his fiancee had referred to it as, I believe she said, monstrosity. So they were putting it closer to my neighbor's house and my house, as opposed to their own, which is, frankly, pretty offensive. But I would ask that, obviously, it not be granted in that location, and that there be a natural barrier. But ultimately, I would ask that it be denied.
Okay. I just want to answer, because I, I didn't get to answer.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
No, that's okay.
My goal has always been to, how can I help? No, I'm sorry, you can't do that with any type of development, any type of commercial, any type of. I want the philosophy of trying to work with people. He's trying to set up a business, however, on his end. It's his land, and, you know, it's, you were taught growing up, if you don't ask, you're never going to get it.
Sure.
You know, the answer's always going to be no if you never ask. And 90% of the time, the answer might still be no, but there's that 10% that. So he did the right thing. He went to zoning board of appeals, because it says 20 acres. He doesn't have 20 acres. So his first step was to go to the zoning board of appeals and say, can I do this on 13? And they rolled the dice and said, sure, all right, go with 13 and go to the planning board. So now, here he is with me, us, here, and so now, we have to look at all that. We take all of your feedback, because he might be 13 acres and not have any neighbors in a 20-acre radius. So that's not going to impact anybody. Nobody comes to the meeting. Nobody even knows it's there. He's only got 13. So we say Godspeed. You never know. So that's how I always, I don't make decisions. He has a right to come and ask, and then we try to build the best we can to accommodate everybody. And as you said, today, here, we can deny, we can continue this for another day while everybody looks at the new material that was submitted today, because we still don't even have the final peer review from the new information we received. Or we close it, and as a Board, make that decision. So that's something that we now will go through. But really, that's how I look at any one of our bylaws, is people can come ask for a waiver, and the worst is going to be no, or the good thing would be yes.
Sure. I understand. I've taken up enough of your time.
Well, that's okay. I just wanted to say one thing. So, and I can say this, because I wasn't on the planning board when we came up with the solar bylaw, so everyone can beat me up later. But in doing a little bit of research on this, I think one of the challenges that we have is we're kind of in what I would call, like, this gray area, right? So the state clearly defines anything under 10 kilowatts as a small installation, and the state clearly defines anything over 250 kilowatts as a large installation. And the town of Lunenburg doesn't really have any differentiation between, for that middle ground. So we don't say what happens between 10 and 250, or whatever the other numbers might be. So what we're using here is a bylaw that was established, looking at these large, commercial megawatt installations. And what we have here is an applicant that's putting in a relatively small installation, or relatively medium-sized installation, when you compare it to these large megawatt installations. And so there is an opportunity for a little bit of gray area. Kind of like, you said, you're in law enforcement. So it's kind of like if you stop someone on the highway going 60 miles an hour in a 55 mile-an-hour speed limit. They're technically in violation of the law, but nine out of 10 times, that's a gray area, and people let that go. And I think, as far as due process is concerned, I think we covered that, through the due process of what we're doing here, the Board does have the right to grant waivers on these kinds of things. So I just wanted to clarify, it's not like, it's not like by granting it, we're breaking Massachusetts law. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that he has a right to ask for this. There is a gray area in these things. We may want to revisit the middle, the medium size, and define those, I don't know. But, or we may keep it as it is, you know, through the course of discussion, say, you know, really, we want to draw that line firmly at 10 kilowatts and deny it. So, but, you know, it's definitely worthy of a discussion, and opening up the public forum, and getting everybody's inputs.
No, I appreciate that, and I can reflect that as well. I don't dispute the fact that, you know, he has the opportunity to apply, or he has the right to apply. And I certainly don't, in any way, I understand the Board's authority. And, you know, I understand that, obviously, despite the law, if you choose to grant it, that's your decision. But I think a comment had been made at the last meeting, as I recall, indicating that, you know, with somebody, they have, I think, it was said that they had the right to do what they wanted with their property. And I would, obviously, bylaws exist for a reason, and it's specifically to, obviously, enforce reasonable requirements as it relates to one's property rights for their own property. So really, I just, again, I wanted to understand, perhaps I should have added a qualifier, like, why it would be considered seriously, not why it would be considered at all, but I just wanted to have a better understanding of, you know, what was the Board's view as it relates to making a decision within those parameters. So I certainly appreciate it. But I've taken up enough of your time. So thank you.
Thank you. It's okay. Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry, Matthew.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jim Targo, 35, Cortland Circle. I just wanted to share a comment that didn't make the minutes of the ZBA, but now that I've had the chance to watch the video transcript, if you will. That was Mr. Bowen's comment at the end, as he adjourned, his comment that the way this has procedurally been done is opening a Pandora's Box for this town. And that was a very striking statement to me. And it may or may not be legal, but that's a very strong thing for this town and for this committee to do. And I hope you understand why we feel that we're in a difficult position in the town, choosing our particular case to be the occasion to open that box. And second, just a quick question. I've heard questions about the size of this plan right now, what it is and isn't. Could someone tell me, is this plan, as it stands now, in accordance with the plan submitted and subsequently on file with the ZBA?
I don't know what plan was filed with the ZBA.
I, excuse me. I don't know. Off the top of my head, I can certainly review that. The argument was made that, and this is certainly for the Board to consider, the bylaw reads that 10 megawatts and under is a small system, 10 megawatts and over is a large system. So the size of the system proposed to the ZBA may or may not have an impact on the size proposed to the planning board. I believe that the ZBA felt that 50 megawatts, 50 kilowatts, I'm sorry, or 75 kilowatts was irrelevant in their determination. This Board still has the discretion to look at the size and make a determination as far as comparing what's on file with the zoning board as to what's on file with the planning board. That can certainly be looked at.
Okay. If I could just point out, the language I quoted is the language that Mr. Bowen chose to put into his motion. So he did not leave you, I believe, with that choice, if his ruling is going to hold. His ruling tied the plan as presented to them. And you certainly can change that.
Yes.
But I suggest the ZBA ruling then goes out the window, as I read it. So that's why I asked the question of you. Is the plan in accordance with the paperwork that's on file with the ZBA? If not, I'd suggest that Mr. Bowen was saying that's important to him.
Okay. I see what you mean. Okay. Thank you.
Is that answered right here in question one of Wyndham and Mingham?
Okay, I see what you mean. Okay, thank you.
Is that answered right here in question one of Wyndham and Mingham?
No, it's not answered. Oh, he's saying it's, that's not the, it's just a, it's a clarification.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Matthew Allison, 305 Flat Hill Road. I'm also a member of the planning board. I'm going to read from a written statement, because it's very important that I say the right thing. I would like to preface my comments by stating that I am speaking here as a resident of Lunenburg, in particular, as a lifelong resident at 305 Flat Hill Road. Explicitly, I am not representing, I am not responding as a member of the planning board. I recuse myself from the proceedings as is required by the conflict of interest law. I have confirmed with State Ethics Commission that I can lawfully partake in discussion as a citizen, as long as I am speaking as in a butter and not as a planning member. I feel that it is important to note that 20 years ago, this section of town was an agricultural area which contained six homes between Elmwood Road and Page Street, and now has over 50. I used to hay a field in the section which now contains three homes and a detention pond that floods my basement. Bylaws are written as a guideline to be interpreted and reinterpreted based on individual projects and context when variances are requested. Blind enforcement of bylaws, which are not treated as living documents, run the risk of stifling or even strangling the viability and sustainability of a town. We know by now that the current solar bylaws were written based on a perceived need for such to provide the town of Lunenburg with control over large commercial projects from outside investors. And many have, and may have been written without consideration of their impact on this type of project Mr. Conway is proposing. The variant process, the waiver process, is in place for exactly this case. Mr. Conway has followed this process, and any approval to date has been acquired legitimately. It is illogical that 0.075 megawatts should be held to the same standard for one or more megawatts. .75 acres of panels is not the same as four or 100 acres of panels, and neither is its impact. In addition, Mr. Conway has stated that he is entirely open to providing as much visual barrier as possible with consideration for input from the abutting opponents. With some abutis and plantings, within three to five years, the nine-foot-tall solar panels would not be visible to current abutters. That said, it is also important to note that two abutting parcels, the two abutting parcels are community areas which are non-residential. One is a wetland area which is currently so overgrown with grass, trees, vine, and poison ivy as to make it unsuitable as recreation area for children or adults. The other is a constructed detention basin. The Village of Flat Hill community consists of 45 homes, each on .5 to 1.5 acres, almost entirely across the street from me since 1998. My property is the same as purchased in 1855 by Isaac Harrington. I was born and raised here since 1972, on that side of Flat Hill. Does anyone care that I, a second-generation farmer on Flat Hill, felt the same way residents in Flat Hill Village do right now? When the Village of Flat Hill Development Project was permitted and built, that those houses and pavement and traffic and kids affront my sensibilities of the aesthetics on Flat Hill Road as much as seeing solar panels through the woods do theirs? No, no should they, because our by and for the people, country, state, town government did their thing and accepted more housing and land development. Finally, I believe Mr. Conway's application for a solar installation project would result in much better use of his land than other possible alternatives, a 40B housing development, for example. Solar energy is a key component of a sustainable future and therefore in line with the historical use of existing agricultural neighborhoods since the 1700s in which the Village of Flat Hill is located. And I would also like to comment, I heard a couple of things said. My understanding of the town of Lunenburg's conservation is that an isolated wetland has no buffer zone associated with it. And also, farming, farming is a commercial activity, so does that mean that I should not grow more food than I can eat myself? I don't think it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mike Rampstack, 44 Cortland. Just two comments, and they're not that, they refer to things that were said tonight. And one has to do with the buffer, and you folks are out there, and Mr. Conway, we were over at his place, and he put up balloons and everything. And I think one of the, I don't know, I'm getting the conception that, okay, if you can't see it from your house, it's okay. Well, that really shouldn't be the rule. I can go out to my backyard by my lot line, and I can see it. If we go out to the common area of Flat Hill, on the property line, you can see it. The point I want to make is, Mr. Conway shouldn't have to rely on our vegetation, on our property, to be used as a buffer. Okay? Second of all, this thing has grown from 25 to 75 kilowatts, and I think 83. And it seems to be, I guess what I want to know is, what's the limit? Or what's, how high do you go here? I mean, if there's nobody that says, well, it's, if it's okay, it's just the zoning variance, well, he can keep adding and adding and adding. So what, what is the upper limit? And I think that's what's concerning a lot of my neighbors, is how, how big is this thing going to be? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nobody else.
No.
Okay, so part of this is, is from the letter that I already sent, so this may be redundant, but I thought we were getting to something really constructive with what Mr. Alonso said, so I wanted to jump on board with that too. This application is before the board in large part because it doesn't fit neatly at the town's solar bylaw. I know I'm being redundant with what we've been talking about here. But that's not particularly surprising, right? It's unreasonable to expect that its authors could have accounted for every permutation of system size and lot size and the system type imaginable, so the category of large-scale ground mount has to act as a catch-all for every project that doesn't qualify under 10 kilowatts. You guys know that. We've been talking about that. It also demands that the board exercise their discretion in reviewing each particular application on a case-by-case basis. That's what we're doing right now. The 200-foot setbacks are imposed under large-scale, the 200-foot setbacks imposed under large-scale ground mount are appropriate for multi-megawatt facilities like Chase Road and Pleasant Street. However, a system size of 75 kilowatts is actually much closer to 10 kilowatts than it is to 1,000, right? Mr. Alonso said it's seven times the 10 kilowatts for a small scale, but it's 13, but a megawatt's 13 times. So it's closer to small scale than it is to the 1 megawatt, which is the smaller of the two that was built in, on the larger two sites. Please? So the point I want to get to is that if I downsize my system to 10 kilowatts, using what you can readily get to put on your roof, a 200-watt panel, the resulting system would mount on two racks, as opposed to what I'm proposing, which is nine racks. Those two racks would be the same height, they'd be nine feet. There'd be two of them instead of nine, so they would go 80 feet across instead of 140 feet across. And I'm stacking them, so putting them, so one, two, would be 80 feet, and I'm going 140 now, and then the next row. So the frontage that you're looking at is very similar, right? So those two racks would, could be located in a 25-foot setback per the small-scale, the small-scale bylaw. That same system would not be subject to development plan review or public hearing. You know, we have to go, I walk right into the building permit if this thing gets denied tomorrow and go do that. Yet it would have a very similar footprint to a nine-rack system, and a nine-rack system is very similar in terms of the visibility and the sightlines. Who thinks that's a good resolution in this room? If this thing gets denied and I walk into the building department tomorrow and get two racks instead of nine, and then put them in the same spot? No one's going to be doing backflips, saying we protected the solar bylaw. This is a no-win situation. We really are, truly are living in a gray area, and to, as offensive as, you know, it's been made out to be that there are nine racks here, and whether it's 50 or 75 or 80 kilowatt, which is sort of driven by what kind of panels you get, whether you get 310-watt panels, 200-watt panels, et cetera. Yeah, it's just a little sort of, if we're okay with a 10-kilowatt system that's going to be in the same spot, and you're going to be able to see it the exact same time of year, then, you know, using, using sightlines as a basis for opposing a project that can be permitted right now versus using that same rationale to shoot down a project seems a little. Also, several voters have argued that a commercial system does not belong in a residential area. I'll also point out that Flat Hill Road is home to several small businesses, including commercial orchards, maple syrup producers, horse riding lessons, horse boarding, and dog breeding, among others. Just like those small businesses, Flat Hill Community Solar is a modest entrepreneurial venture by one of the neighborhood's own residents, me. Flat Hill Solar is incorporated through the SEC. I'm the sole proprietor. It's just me. The treasurer, the janitor, the whole show. Additionally, the regional tactics assessor estimates that Flat Hill Community Solar will pay $2,000 annually to the town for commercial property tax. Several voters from Cortland Circle have also expressed a concern that the solar panels will be detrimental to the natural rural aesthetic of the area. They've pointed to the winding hiking trails and horse paths that line the area. They've referenced the deer and turkeys that inhabit the area and roam the woods. I agree wholeheartedly. I have no intention of disrupting that condition in any way. In fact, since I've lived at 322 Flat Hill Road, I've demonstrated a commitment to maintaining the natural beauty of the area and provided an open door to my neighbors to enjoy it. My property stretches the entire southern border of Cortland, of the Cortland Horseshoe, and it's home to those hiking trails and the horse paths that they're talking about. And yet, there's not a single no trespassing sign on my property. On the contrary, each year, I renew the recreational zoning. I list the land on that recreational zoning as open to neighbors and guests of neighbors, quote. I've been proactive in visiting all of the surrounding horse boarding farms to inform the owners that they and their guests are always welcome, and I also bear the brunt of thousands of dollars of property tax every fiscal quarter for that land, something that neighbors and guests did not contribute to, will never have to worry about, and continue to benefit from. Still, I'm not proposing to snap a single twig in those woods. The proposed panels are to be installed on, here's the real number, less than one-half of an acre. By square footage, it's .3, 3 hundredths of an acre, of a cleared hayfield that I currently mow, and of my 13.1 acres, that's 2.3%. So no, I don't think it's an egregious abomination of the zoning bylaw. I think that it's in the gray area, and that it's, that if, if this medium-sized system can't get built, then show me a lot that can. Setback off the road, hidden by woods on all other sides. If it's disrupting the scenic vista, if you want me to put arborvitus on the roads you can't see from the road, I'll put arborvitus on the road. I'm willing to compromise. I have some notes here addressing some of the other stuff that was said during the public comment, but I don't think I want to read them. I think I want to close out.
Okay.
And before, at some point, are you going to reach a decision tonight, or is it going to wait until the third-party engineers?
When we're done with public comment, that's what we'll figure out.
Okay.
Because as I said, there's three options we can do. We can continue the public hearing for that feedback, we can deny, or we can close it and move forward.
Okay. If there is a vote, I've been advised that I should request a straw poll before you do that, so.
You had a request to what?
To, to request a straw poll before a vote, if there's going to be a vote tonight.
Oh, okay. How we would vote?
Yeah.
I'm waiting.
To the extent that that's possible. If you're going to do that tonight, I'd request.
Okay.
Do that first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public? Mr. Whalen?
John Whalen, 526 West Townsend Road. I can speak to why this was written. I can also speak to the fact that there is no gray area. Everyone on this board has talked about making things work, and the gray area, and the bylaw is not perfect. The bylaw is really good, and I wish people would enforce the bylaw as it was written, as people of this town worked really hard to put it together and get it approved. And I'm not sure if any of you have actually read the whole bylaw and compared it against other towns, but we have. We've compared it against other towns. We got it approved, and we made sure that it was something that was going to be approved by the Attorney General, or we would have actually made a stronger bylaw. That's the reason why we didn't. And it was approved, and other towns have done the same thing. Other towns have fought large-scale solar projects and had them restricted in their use. We've made the point that commercial projects belong in commercial zones. If you look at the definition of a commercial zone, that's where large-scale projects like this should be put. Of course, that's not what was, happened last time. We wanted to make sure that it was not too restrictive, because if it's too restrictive, you run the risk of them saying it's too restrictive, and therefore you can put it anywhere. So that's why we put in just what we wanted, the most important thing, the most restrictive piece that we put in that bylaw, and the reason we put it there. And that was so that other people in this town, residents of this town, do not have to go through the same aggravation that we went through when these were put upon us. The board was notified that we needed to get a better bylaw in place by town council, and it didn't happen. And then we took it upon ourselves to get involved and make sure there was a bylaw at town meeting. Now, as I understand it, everyone's now saying there's a gray area. This above 10 but below 250, well, there's a reason why we didn't put it in there. We wanted to make sure that bylaw was bulletproof, would get approved, and it would protect the residents of this town. We don't care about what you put in a commercial zone. We don't care what you put in immediate scale. We want to make sure that if you're going to be putting something in your neighbor's backyard, you're not putting something in your neighbor's backyard that you wouldn't put in your own. Okay? If you only have a small lot, great, you're allowed small ground-mounted solar in your own lot, 25 feet from the, from the, from the side yard, because that's all you have. The intent is not to put it next to your neighbors because you can, it's to put it there if you need it and to allow everybody in this town to take the advantage of solar. It's not there to make it so that, well, it's the same size and same shape, and I'm going to put it right next to my neighbors, and so in that case, I could just have 100 megawatt facility. That's not the point of the bylaw. If someone wants to change a bylaw, there's a procedure. It is not the zoning board of appeals overruling the bylaw. That's specifically something they cannot do. They are not allowed by state law to override your bylaws and change the intent of the bylaw. In this case, they didn't, because they said it's contingent upon your development plan review. So it's now your decision to decide, based on our bylaw, what is reasonable. And if you think it's reasonable, and you think we went through all of this, and you think it's reasonable to put the ramp stacks through this, it's hopeless. We've done everything we could possibly do to make this bylaw something that you would not mind having next door. And I'm sorry, I would mind having something 30 feet off the property line. It's upon, it's incumbent upon the applicant to prove that it's not going to be visible from the neighbor's property, or to provide adequate buffering and plant materials and whatever else. The reason why that was in there, by the way, that it could be less than 200 feet, was actually my proposal. Because there's lots of places in this town where the road drops off, right off the road, and you're not going to see it if someone has a solar project right off the road, 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet off the road. Okay? It wasn't so that you can have the ability to put it 30 feet off someone's property line and then come here and say, well, I'll do whatever they want me to do. No, that's not the intent. And we have a bylaw. I don't know why there's this gray area. And one thing on the gray area. The proper procedure, if there's a gray area, and the zoning board of appeals thinks that, so these members of the ZBA think there is a reason why this bylaw is imperfect, and members of this board believe this is an imperfect bylaw. That was passed three years ago. Since the applicant presented this to the ZBA, he had the opportunity to change the bylaw. It could have been changed at town meeting. He could have proposed it in April. It could have been done in 45 days before the due date for submissions, and they could have actually proposed to change the bylaw. The planning board is actually supposed to be the board that would take that into consideration and change the bylaw, or propose a change to the bylaw. No one's done that in three years. And the first time it happens, to waive everything that's in the bylaw and give the whole thing away? That doesn't make any sense. That is not the way you encourage and foster the trust of your community that went through the effort of putting this together, to then just cut the legs out from under them and say, okay, well, it's property owners, you can do whatever you want. That's not what the planning board does. It's not just to work with people, it's to make sure you're working with everybody and that you're following the laws that we've put together and that the town has approved. And the Attorney General, the Attorney General backed us up on it. So to see a project come in that doesn't have the appropriate documentation, it's way outside the bounds of what's in the bylaw, and to even entertain it this far, I'm stunned. So I would hope that you would, please, look at the bylaw again. Take your time and read it. It's a good document. Thank you.
Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. I just want to, I'm not going to speak for or against, but the one thing I would caution the planning board is a lot of information just came in. Abutters have not had a chance to read it. They have not had a chance to go through it. The peer reviewer has not yet commented. I think there's a lot of information, a lot of questions that remain as to what plan was submitted to the ZBA, what plans before you. I think people would like the opportunity to review that information, and then be given the opportunity to comment on it. So, I would urge the planning board to keep this public hearing open until all of the information is submitted, so that the abutters can comment and review the information before the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Do we have any new public comment?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you just come to the mic.
New, half-old. I apologize if I crossed the line.
I'm sorry?
Said, "Half-new, half-old. I apologize if I crossed the line." Jim Targo, 35, Cortland Circle. Just to follow up on my previous, and the previous comment, you surprised me when you said you might vote today, is why I wanted to mention this. In the previous meeting, you started the meeting, actually, about 20 minutes in, with the statement that there were dimensional variations which were, which took issues away from this board. And you were starting from the premise that those were not within your purview, and you'd move on from there. And so, I'd like to return, and this is where I'm half-in, half-out, on the question of, is this plan still in accordance with the ZBA plan? And if it's not, it seems to me you can now back up, and you need to back up, to the question of the 20 acres and the setback, because they're now in your purview. Now, you made a determination last week, and I'd just like to make sure, is that still valid? Or do you now have that right to back up and address those questions yourself?
I think what he's asking is if, if the plan submitted to the planning board differs from the plan as referenced in the ZBA decision, whether or not the application becomes void because it doesn't have the 20 acres and it doesn't have the 200-foot setback, excuse me, required per the bylaw. Again, I think that, in light of the 34-page letter from the abutters council, and the fact that there is information that was submitted that the abutters have not seen, it would be intelligent for the board to hold off in making a decision until their next meeting. But, again, that's a question that, whether or not the plan remains valid, is something that, it's confirming that the two plans actually match up.
Okay. Thank you. And I would request that if they do not, that you do back up to the things that were in your purview. So, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Does the board have any other comment to the public comment before we go into what our next steps are?
I would just comment on what was said about the gray area. And no bylaw is perfect. That's why we're here. If it was perfect, it'd just be Mr. Salvagio making the decisions over in the building department. We have to look at everything on a case-by-case basis. We are looking at this on a case-by-case basis, and that's why I show up four times a month, five times a month, to do this. So, just in defense of the gray area.
Okay. My question is more for the director, because I'm looking at Whitman and Bingham's October 15th document.
That's Mr. Conway's document. Those are his responses to Whitman and Bingham.
Oh, okay. Here's.
You looking for the Whitman and Bingham?
Because, well, I can go off Mr. Conway's. Is there any, I thought that the zoning board, what was in front of the zoning board were two issues. It was the lot size.
And the setback requirement.
And the setback were the two issues, not the killer lots, not the, it was those two.
No, but if the decision references the plan as submitted, then it's inexplicably linked to that plan. They could have granted him relief on the acreage and the setback to a specified distance, but they issued it per a submitted plan. So, in order for the relief to be valid, that plan should match. Or the distance, or the distance should at a minimum meet the requirements in that plan. And again, it's something I'll have to look at the file that they have in their office and compare them to the plans that we have. I don't imagine that, well, I'm not going to speculate, but generally, an applicant wouldn't draw one set of plans and then spend the time and effort to draw a second set of plans, but, again, I don't have the zoning board plans in my hand at the moment, so I'm not going to say they do or don't.
So, Adam, in your sponsors, I was not really clear, are we talking about sort of the dimensionality or the capacity? Like, you know?
Unfortunately, it's both, because it's linked specifically to the plan as submitted. So, if, my interpretation would be the plan submitted to the zoning board needs to be, I'll say, identical. There's been some information that the planning board has requested on the plan that wouldn't or shouldn't change the character of the plan, the distance to the nearest home, the shadow or the shade area, but the specific layout of the solar facility should be identical between the two plans.
Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, so, it sounds like that's something we're going to need to get either clarification, either research, or council, and/or ZBA?
Well, I can get the ZBA file and compare the two.
Okay.
And, you know, I can work with Whitman and Bingham to make sure that they concur that the two are the same plan.
Well, in my recommendation, I'll just move this along, is that we continue the public hearing. I had said that at the beginning, where we did not have Whitman and Bingham's final peer review from the newest data we got, that we might want to continue this, and we'll decide that at the end. So, I would think that we would still, I want to keep this open, where the residents, the applicant, and ourselves have all gotten some new material that we might want to review before denying, closing, or moving forward with the plan. So, my recommendation would be to continue the public hearing to a date we'll set, if the board so sees.
Yeah, I'm in favor of continuing. I think we should, I think if, for example, hypothetically, let's say the board was predominantly in the mood to, to some extent, grant, maybe with whatever conditions, I think having some discussion around that, understanding where we're at, what our thoughts are, would be useful at this point, because right now, what I hear from all the parties involved is there's uncertainty on both sides, and there's, you know, there's willingness to work together if it comes to that, but I don't think there's going to be that cooperation unless there's a little bit more guidance regarding, you know, what the outcome might be. So, for example, if we're leaning towards some type of conditional approval, then I think having that discussion and understanding that tonight might allow the parties to begin the kind of serious discussions that might result in conditional approval along conditions that are more mutually agreeable, whereas if we just kind of, you know, push the pause button tonight, we're not going to make a lot of progress along those lines until we resume.
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm good with that. I'm good with discussing what we would think would look better, as far as organization of this. I'm, you know, I'll honor the spirit of it for the sake of getting the groups to collaborate more, but I think that's really what needs to happen, is I think you need the support to really be successful in this kind of endeavor. And I think that if, if it was reorganized a little bit, such that some of your offsets were better, and it was, things were moved around, and you had the appropriate buffers, if the neighbors felt that it was more into the gray area definition, then I think that that might provide some guidance.
So, myself, I'm a capitalist at heart, and I feel for the applicant, but we don't think we've had a case come up since I've been on the planning board where so many people were against what was proposed. So, right now, I'm leaning towards disapproval based on the public comment, but I would also caution the abutters to what Mr. Conway mentioned earlier. If he gets denied, he can go put two of those racks anywhere on the site he wants to without screening it by right. So, I fear for what that could look like, too. So, I would urge the abutters and Mr. Conway to work together between now and our next hearing to come to a reasonable compromise.
Yeah, so, I guess I have a few thoughts. I guess in the, just to cut to the chase, you know, there are some outstanding questions, I think, need to be answered before we can make any kind of ruling, at least a ruling in favor, you know, what Adam talked about regarding the ZBA. Obviously, we need to know that beforehand. There are some things about the project, you know, that I think, you know, based on the plans that, that I'm interested in talking about. As overall, as far as overall, do I think this is a viable project, based on the town's bylaw, the special permit process, and that sort of thing? My personal opinion is, you know, I have a very good memory of when we put that together, and I stand by my statements about the discussion on the planning board. You know, we knew we were going to have, you know, an area, a gray area, and it, our goal wasn't, we were going to deny everything in that range. We talked about, you know, a number of scenarios where, you know, there would be things worth approving. I think, you know, my personal opinion, I think, I don't think it's a totally rare opinion, is that, you know, there is value in what, in the state's goals and the state bylaw, in terms of their, what they're trying to do with opening up and promoting solar development. I also stand by the goals, you know, the principles behind our solar bylaw, which is, you know, preserving aesthetic character, preserving, you know, public safety and health and well-being, and, you know, and protecting unreasonable, unreasonable and inappropriate impacts on people's, you know, hard-earned property values. It's, you know, I appreciate, obviously, everybody who's come out on both sides of the issue. Yeah, I appreciate the neighbors coming out to talk about the things that concern them. I think, you know, anybody would feel the same way about a significant change in their property. I know I've felt the same way about things, you know, happening near places that I've lived, including things that are totally by right, you know, like building a house or something. It's just people, you know, they get, you know, people, I don't know, people can be change-resistant, and I'm certainly one of those people who, you know, it's fear of the unknown, takes a while to get used to things, regardless of what they are. So, bottom line, I think this, I think what's being proposed, you know, in terms of the gray area, this is, you know, like 77.5% of, like, the Pleasant Street-sized project on over 50% of the land requirement. So, I think the ZBA did an appropriate thing in, you know, moving this along for further consideration. I think having this before us is going to be an impetus and information to help us when we are able to find the time to do it, to have a much better perspective to craft this sort of mid-range, medium-sized bylaw. So, I'm not, you know, I personally, you know, despite, and I can really relate to the concerns of the abutters, but my personal feeling is, having toured the site, I think if we can find a way to make this project work, I think it's in our best interest to do so. And again, why, why, you know, given the semi-commercial character of this, or the commercial character of this, I think that, you know, the state of Massachusetts and many people in the public, including myself, consider, you know, alternative energy like agriculture is important to the well-being of the Commonwealth and to people in it. I've been to the site. I've been to Pleasant Street as well. The scale is totally different. I think the, you know, the visual impact, while still, you know, not nonexistent, is significantly different in scale. If you go around the neighborhoods there near Flat Hill, and, you know, this Cortland is a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. If you go up and down Flat Hill, you know, there are things that are allowed by right that are not particularly sightly. There's plenty of things that the applicant could do on his property, including things with economic value, like timbering, that he could probably do by right, and which would have a much more devastating impact to the neighborhood, I think, than what he's proposing. If you look at it as his, although it doesn't necessarily do that, but using his property in that way, if that preserves his ability to financially maintain, you know, the conservation of his other land, I mean, if you look at it that way, there's a lot uglier stuff he could probably do there. Now, you might say that's easy for me to say. I'm several miles away from it, but that's, that's just something I think, that's a piece of perspective that I think is valuable. And I mean, you know, the reality is, he does own that piece of property, and, you know, Flat Hill condos, if they really, if the goal of Flat Hill condos was to preserve, you know, a 500-foot buffer around it, they could have bought that, and it would increase the cost of marketing the condo association, but they didn't, because it was a cost-benefit thing. It wouldn't have been affordable if they purchased all that property. You know, I would have liked to purchase a lot next door to me and, you know, kind of live in my own little, you know, hole there, but, you know, you can't, we can't control everything. We live together, and that's, that's kind of the way it goes. So, in case it isn't obvious yet, I would like to find a way to see this project work. I think it's important that we ultimately get a clear, a clear bylaw with clear guidelines that, you know, the town can examine and pass at town meeting, and that can give more predictability around this sort of thing. But, you know, I don't think it's a done deal, but I think it's, that's kind of, that's where I'm leaning. And regarding, I guess, my biggest concerns around the project right now are, I went out to Pleasant Street this week, because at our last meeting, someone from Pleasant Street was talking about the noise impact on Pleasant Street. You know, I was there for like 10 or 15 minutes. It wasn't a scientifically valid research study. The panels themselves seemed pretty quiet. The pad-mounted equipment seemed extremely loud and annoying. I would probably be really annoyed if I lived right behind that pad-mounted equipment. They makes a buzzing sound, which is audible from a significant distance. I don't know what the exact distance is. Kind of a low, annoying buzz. And so, you know, we asked the applicant here about the equipment he's installing, and he believes that because of the scale equipment, of the equipment, the noise impact will be less. Someone mentioned today, you know, getting a noise impact study done. I would, I would support that, and, you know, if it's also possible to get that, any, you know, first of all, to make sure that, you know, there isn't going to be noise disturbance to the neighbors, because that, that would have an impact both on health and public safety and property values, I think, in a significant measure. So, I'd say, look into that. If it's, you know, if possible, move the equipment, which I think are inverters, move them, you know, moving them further away from abutters would be a welcome, a welcome thing, in my opinion. I'll wrap up here pretty soon. I was, I was at the site. As far as the visual impacts, I mean, I think Mr. Ramstack made a great point that, you know, sort of the visual success of the project shouldn't be contingent upon his maintaining the vegetation on his lot. And I think from, from what the applicant said, he's open to working with that, you know, that understanding as well. But I think I've probably talked enough now, so that's, that's just kind of where I'm leaning on this thing.
Okay. And for me, Mr. Whalen talked about creating the solar bylaw. I was there for the whole thing, the two years of that we spent creating that bylaw. And I always take away Mr. Parkview, who is someone I've come to greatly respect, was the resident that really started with the solar bylaw recreation. And he taught me livability, and what is livability? And the goal is to try to get as much livability as possible. Now, I'm with Damon on, the abutters are very critical. I want to support the program. I want to support the program. I don't, I'm not against solar, I support solar and what it does. I support that people can buy a panel from you and save money on their electric bill, so it becomes a business for you. But again, livability is the most critical thing. People buy their property, they buy their homes for a reason. You have a right to do what you want on your home, just like they have a right to do what they want, as long as we follow our, our rules and regulations in the community. I agree that if we so gathered to put your solar field there, that the vegetation would not be up to the abutters, it would be up to you. And, and on Pleasant Street and Chase Road, we can put in our directives, anything we want in our directives that you would need to do, and that would be a vegetation that nobody can see your solar fields, and it's not that they can't see them through their vegetation, it's that they can't see them through your vegetation. I believe in the full-grown trees, we had that conversation Saturday. I don't believe in, you know, you plant Charlie Brown, and in 20 years, he's going to be a big, beautiful thing that nobody sees. No, you're going to plant a nine, 10-foot now, that, that's, that's working already. So, my goal would be that you try to find that livability, because as Damon also said, Mr. Conway has the right to put up two panels and provide you nothing. He can just go put them up, and, and you'll see them, you'll look at them, there'll be no vegetation except what's there, so, and we don't want that either. We, we want everybody to try to work together to come up with that livability, and if we can't, then we will have to, what are you showing?
It's not quite nothing, it's whatever the building official would.
Right, right. Whatever, the building official, and, and there is buffering there, so, what that would be, we, we don't know. So, thank you. But, so that's where I'm standing, is kind of that, the, the, the abutters, and there are so many abutters that are impacted by this. I feel bad that there was the confusion in the mailing, that they didn't have this opportunity at the zoning board of appeals, that they didn't know about it, to be able to start with that first process. And I, I shared that with the planning director at the last meeting, and hopefully, we'll get that fixed, so that Mr. Hicks's mail isn't not getting to you. But as it is, it didn't. So, but I'm leaning towards the, the abutters unless we can find some type of livability. And it's not that I don't support solar, I, I do.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, like, this, this site, in my opinion, does seem very good for the, the proposed use, and, you know, if we can't make this site work, we're going to have, we're going to have trouble expanding, supporting medium-size solar. There aren't going to be a lot of sites that are much better than this. You go on the site, it is pretty isolated, yet there are areas that need some screening, but the public impact is pretty minimal.
Well, and that's from both areas, and, and that's the thing, is, is as the attorney for, Mr. Ramstek stated, that, you know, they're willing to talk to him about moving it down. So, maybe that wasn't clear, that, that Mr. Conway had the thought process to move it down a little bit, so it would even be further from Mr. Rean's, with your screening, not their screening, maybe they didn't understand that. So, I'm hoping when he identifies all of those things with them, that they will see that. That's why I asked for continuation, because she said, oh, we would be more than happy to sit down and talk about moving, so I was hoping they'd be able to work that out on their own.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
So, would there be a motion to continue this, a motion to close?
I'd make the motion to continue the public hearing.
Two.
To, when's the next appropriate time, Adam?
Next meeting is 10 November.
How's our agenda look?
Can we?
I mean, the agenda's the agenda. If that's the appropriate time, then that's when we'll continue at two, and.
Okay, and the next key factor, will everybody be able to be at that meeting? Because we need all four here at that November 10th meeting to have a quorum for this public hearing, so we can't.
Not to have a quorum to have the ability to vote and approve a special permit.
And Ken and I cannot miss another one, because we've already missed one. So, it needs to be that Ken and I are.
No, Ken can't. You were here at the last one.
Oh, yes, I was. I wasn't here.
What are the voting, what are the voting procedures for this special permit? Like, what type of vote is required of the four of us?
Four of, all four of you need to vote for it, for it to be passed.
It's a simple majority?
No, it's a sup, yeah, it's a supermajority. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yes. And it's a supermajority of the five-member board. So, with the one member recusing himself, all four remaining members need to vote in the affirmative for it to pass.
So, will all four of you be able to be here on November?
As far as I know, I'll be here.
10th.
I believe so. Yeah, I believe so as well.
So, 6:35?
You've got, you've got Highfield at 16.
Okay, so we'll call it seven.
Seven o'clock again? Okay. So, the motion would be for November 10th at 7:00 PM?
Seven.
Because we already have someone at 6:30.
Got you.
Scheduled. Highfield Village is at 6:30 on the, uh, 10th.
Nathan just seconded.
Okay. Any more discussion? So, all in favor of moving, continuing this till November 10th at 7:00 PM?
Aye.
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 Aye. And I would now, well, I don't need to make a motion, so the public hearing has been continued till November 10th, and we'll go on to our next agenda item. Thank you all. Have a good evening. Did everybody sign? Just please make sure you signed up. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your participation.
Yes. Yes, submitted.
Email from, yeah, I'm not getting any of these, like, I haven't gotten any of these.
Yeah, you have my wrong email. It's J.O. Balata. You've got J. Balata. That's why, I was going to say, I've not received any emails from you.
Somebody's getting them.
Maybe it's that guy in Westford.
Some J. Balata's getting them. The guy in the condo over there.
I think that whole weekend is burning.
So.
Just get rid of this completely. That makes this distance close to 150, right? And makes this distance here really big. And if they, if they did that, or if he would do that, then he could, he could probably get away with some very little buffer over here, vegetation buffer, and then just put something back here. And, and I think if we did a medium, it would probably look something like that, though, 150 versus 30.
Is this a new habit?
Right? Because I have 100 there, he's got 100 here, and I think it would qualify. We could even maybe make that 80 feet or something like that, but if, if I was on the.
So, are we ready to go back?
That's what I would have done.
To our next agenda, and if I can find a new agenda, I'll just pile the paper.
Washing.
Okay, so, the public hearing is done. New business status reports, White Woods app. We need to re-vote on White Woods because we didn't have a majority.
You had a, you had a quorum.
But we didn't have a super.
But there was not a supermajority, so we would need a motion to reconsider the vote, a new motion on the hearing, and then a vote.
Okay, and Ken and I both did read the minutes, watched YouTube, and signed the mullin. So, we're able, the mullin rule, so we are now able to vote on that. So, if I, I would accept a motion to re-vote, reconsider for vote, White Woods.
Uh, motion to, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you guys so much. It's the same thing with the next item, 909 Mass.
Now, you need to have the motion on the, on the actual item. You need, that was the motion to reconsider the vote.
Oh, okay.
Now, you need to have, now you need to have the vote.
Okay, so now I vote to accept the minute.
No, now, now you're going to, someone is going to make a motion on the approval of the modification.
Findings and directives.
Because you had a special permit hearing. Only three members voted, so that's a technical failure. So, in order for this to be a legal, approved special permit modification, four members need to vote in favor.
Right.
So, now someone needs to make a motion similar to what was made at the original hearing, then you need to vote on that motion to actually approve the modification.
I'll make a motion to approve the modifications that were attempted, we attempted to approve at the hearing. Second.
Can we do it?
Is that good enough, Adam, or do you want to read the whole thing?
All in favor?
That's good.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now we have the same issue with 909 Massachusetts app. We first need a vote to reconsider the vote.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, now I need a motion.
To make the approval with the directives as.
Submitted.
As, yes.
As previously submitted.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, 909 Mass. App, I, I didn't file any mullin paperwork for that, does that matter?
Were you here for that hearing?
No.
Okay, well, there's four on five.
That's fine. You still, the majority's still here.
That was, that was.
The maid's calling me as absent, so.
That was the thumb drive that you gave back to me.
No, the thumb, the thumb drive was the Flat Hill.
You remember the flags and the signs?
I totally remember the issue, I just didn't file any paperwork.
As long as there's four, if you haven't done it, as long as the other four are, are present and can vote, that's, you don't necessarily need to.
Was I, I, I mean, I, I thought I, yeah, I mean, I remember discussing it, and I was in favor of it, so, but I technically, I don't think I was at the meeting, and I didn't file any mullin paperwork for it.
Yeah, then you'll just, you'll just abstain.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
I, I wasn't here, but I did my mullin.
Yes, you did.
So, I can vote. So, you're abstaining?
Yep.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. I just got one more signature. Definitive subdivision Elmwood, you saw that in your weekly packet? He's moving right along. Does anybody have any questions on Elmwood? Okay, the next one we have. Trittown Landing, no report. Middle school update, construction, scanting members, we talked about that when Nathan did his report. Again, I, I just think the school committee, they're doing a great job providing that. It's a great way to keep people informed. Highfield Village, we have a public hearing scheduled for them at 6:35 on.
Just to clarify, the public hearing, that's, because it's so old, right? That, not, because that's an existing project, it's been around for quite a while.
Yes, but we never.
There's never been a hearing.
Never, okay, there's never even been a hearing on it?
Not that I'm aware of.
In nine years, there's never been a hearing?
Many, 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 many times.
We, we had a first hearing, didn't we, but we never continued it.
So, what kind of work did the planning board actually do on it? Did they just receive an application and mess it?
Yes, kind of just received, Steve Marsden gave a little bit of input. I, I wasn't even on the board then. I mean, it was before I was on the board. Steve Marsden gave a little bit of input, and that was the extent of the public hearing.
Okay, so we haven't approved the plan yet?
No, we have not approved.
So, it's as if it were a new?
Yes, and that's why, now that we have the two engineers talking, it really was them starting from scratch.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And again, that'll be at 6:35 on, on November 10th.
You think we're going to finish that in a half hour?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think that where it's the opening of a hearing, you know, Flat Hill Road has been a couple of long discussions, generally based on abutter input. Oftentimes, the first hearing is presentation, and then, you know, some discussion of, of what issues may have been raised by the engineer. I don't think that the first time around, there's a lot to talk about, because there'll probably be a number of technical issues that need to be resolved, and, you know, the board can have some, can have some input, you can, you can have it, the discussion as long as you'd like, but oftentimes, the meat of it is going to change some based on, on some of the technical issues that are brought up. And, you know, the reality is, I'd rather have you start Flat Hill at 7:30 and have a, than be done with Highfield at 6:35 and twiddling your thumbs, waiting around, or having scheduled it for 7:30 and, and finish.
We did it for seven.
Yeah, we did, but that, but what I'm saying is, I'd rather have you, you know, you, you can always start after the time. You just can't start before the time, so if, if they're up against each other, you know, it's maybe, you know, people may have to wait a little bit, but it's not like you're like, okay, everybody show up at seven, 6:30, and we'll just kind of, you know, trial by combat to see who goes first.
Right, and that's why I had, as the chair had always asked Marjorie, is that we do all the hearings first, because I, I remember when I first got, like, people coming in at nine o'clock for a hearing, at 9:00 PM, and really helping us, a customer for an art coming to a meeting at 9:00 PM, so I'd rather have them wait till 8:15 versus us sitting here till nine o'clock. Okay. So, Emerald Place, no report. Force Corp, no report. 651 Chase Road, no report. White Tail Crossing, no report. Action File, we got in our packets, 90 West Townsend Road Notice Intent to Sell, it was emailed to us.
Yep.
Now, the Open Space Committee sent some verbiage.
Did they meet? Because I didn't get called from them.
I, I don't know if they met.
Does anybody need a hard copy?
This is just, I have it in my pile here.
I'll look on it, okay.
Brandon Kibbe, I think, just kind of commented off the cuff.
Okay.
To them, I don't think he brought it to the board.
I can't find it, I read it.
Okay, here it is, right here.
Highfield, Highfield, split at a plane.
So, he was saying that there was a couple of things. It's the Pellerin, P-E-L-L-E-R-I-N property.
Thank you. Right of first refusal, that's it, rougher.
Did you find it?
Got it.
Okay, perfect. He's saying it does abut a small piece of town-owned conservation land, 3.6 acres to the south. The conservation land was gifted in 1972 by the Brown family. It does not appear to contain any exemplary wildlife habitat.
Stuff that just got freed up. Lean property? I'm not sure. I think it might be.
So, those were like the two major points he wanted to point out to the board. He also had said, finally, I note that the Pellerin land shares significant, significant boundary with the DPW's land on Chase Road, which I suspect may be of interest to the board. The right of 61, right of first refusal can be exercised for non-conservation purposes by the municipality if it so chooses. So, even if it doesn't fit the open space by bullet criteria, if the board is looking and so see fit because it abuts municipal or town property, that's another case as well. So, there's those two options there.
Chaptalane property.
So, and I don't know if anybody has, I kind of always follow suit with the Open Space Committee. I, I think Brandon does a great job and, and steers us in the right direction, so.
So, this abuts on the, on the backside, that's Chaptalane's property, or?
If you look at the aerial photograph.
Yep.
The yellow outline is the DPW.
Yep.
The red outlined is, is the 61 land. The green outline to the south, it's sort of a rectangle of, of sorts, it's probably more of a trapezoid, and it has that little finger that comes out to West Townsend Road, that's the conservation.
That's conservation. Do we know what, who owns land behind it? Is that?
I would imagine the house on Northfield Road.
I wonder if that's Roman?
You see, on this, there's that large open area, that's all that one large parcel.
I'm sorry, what?
There's a, there's one large parcel that goes down to, to Northfield Road.
And do you know what the green hash parcel is behind that?
Uh, that is a brown property right, it's a right of way to get to the conservation land.
Oh. Oh, I got it, brown property, thanks. And so, do we know where the lane property is in relationship to this? Is that, is that over here on this left side of this?
Yeah, that's on Holman Road, isn't it?
No, it's also on Chase Road as well, so it also covers land between Holman and Chase.
And it comes out on Northfield.
Yeah, that's not the, maybe that's, that's where the cemetery.
It borders all three, right, so.
So I would guess it would be, I believe it's.
Northfield and Chase.
I believe it's to the north.
Okay.
I don't think it went to Northfield.
Because if it's.
Yeah, it does, there's a corner of Northfield, the corner of Holman and Northfield is actually part of that property.
Yeah, because I just remember on my walk, Pete McCullough was there and he was saying the track team could go from the school down Northfield and run the conservation for track, because right now, they're running on the road. So he was thrilled to be able to have the conservation land for the track team to run. Okay, so what are your thoughts on?
Well, the aerial photo is interesting. Do we know if the DPD, if the DPW facility there is impeding on this property already?
Maybe just that backside a little bit.
I think that it should also be noted that laying GIS over aerials is a wholly imperfect science.
That's true.
So you're trying to mash two things together that aren't necessarily compatible.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if you look sometimes at Google or some of the other.
Oh, yeah, I know, Google was way off on that always.
You turn the layer on and the road is over here.
Houses are on the opposite side of the road and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a house in the middle of the, of the road layout, so I think that's one of those things you have to take into account.
Okay.
And, you know, it could also be that previous use of this property were in some way linked to the DPW, and so over time, it's just sort of blended together and people owning and using this property may have continued to have use of that area that appears to be some use by the DPW.
Do we have any information from the DPW, is there whether or not they have any interest in expanding the size of the facility there, or?
We do not. If I'm not mistaken, the DPW recently reconstructed their facility. You know, I imagine that at that time, they would have expressed interest in how, in making it larger if necessary. Again, I'm not going to speak for the DPW director, but it appears that the facility is newer and seems to be fairly functional.
Paul, is Mopis Brook, isn't there access to Mopis Brook here? Because when we were doing the DPW.
Mopis Brook is right next to the DPW.
Yeah, we had, we did some work to the Brook when we were doing the addition to the DPW when we were on that committee.
That's Highland, I think.
Right, I mean, there was substantial work done when the DPW, as you know, because you were on the committee, when the DPW was being reconstructed, there was substantial work to remove any sediment that was coming from the DPW site into the Brook.
Right.
And Nashville River Watershed was very instrumental in putting in a sediment forebay to remove, and it was a very substantial project. So I haven't looked at the aerial, but if it is in close proximity to Mopis Brook, I would want, personally, as a member of the board, I would want the conservation to weigh in. Because Mopis Brook is one of the very few cold water fisheries left in Massachusetts.
Yep, and I remember when I was on the committee that they did work there with the Mopis Brook.
Yeah, it looks like there's some kind of pond on the edge of the site here.
So.
I don't know if, what that's worth.
Yeah, I think conservation obviously has to weigh in on this, and.
It has been forwarded through to conservation.
Okay.
So I don't know if they have made comment, I don't know if the previous commission or the newly appointed commission will be making comment, but.
Presume the newly appointed.
I'm sorry?
I presume the newly appointed commission.
Well, and again, I don't know, it was forwarded sort of the end of last month to their clerk, so I don't know if somewhere in, you know, in the lead up to the exodus they, you believe it'll be the new commission?
Yeah, it would make sense, I don't think anyone's going to.
All right, so for our goal.
So, I'm sorry, that, and I just, I do think we should double check with the DPW and see if they have any interest in expanding the property for any particular reason, just it would be good to know that, so you know, it already abuts the DPW.
Well, that's where I had said at the beginning, the Board of Selectmen, as Brandon said, if the, it doesn't meet the open space guidelines, the Board of Selectmen might want to.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
Look at that for the DPW, how much land's behind there, so that's something the Board of Selectmen can look at.
Okay, so it's their jurisdiction.
Yeah, and the only thing I'm saying is that they want feedback by October 30th, and we don't meet before that, so kind of tonight's the, if we want to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen saying, you know, we're kind of supporting what open space is saying, and list the factors of the Mopis Brook, the, you know, DPW department, would they foresee a need for storage, for whatever?
Yeah, I think, I think it's worth looking into on this one.
Just kind of put those bullets on there so they know that we read it and we support always open space.
Conservation.
In conservation, yeah.
So the board itself has no.
No, I would just like them.
You're not for or against, you're going to support conservation or open space, presumably they would be of a similar tact, and suggest that the board be open to speaking with the DPW director about possible expansion if necessary for.
And the Mopis Brook.
The uses of their.
Yeah, and the Mopis Brook.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I looked at when I, when I looked at that, the lot, is it's pretty close to being on Chase there, which is, you know, if it isn't already, you know, an area we're looking to expand commercial zone, commercial and possibly, you know, industrial office related zoning in. So, it sounds like, you know, that would be, that would be, that would be possibly a reason to not acquire it, but it doesn't have that much frontage, most of its frontage is on West Townsend Road, and, I don't know, I support those, so I don't think it's critical, like, I don't think by, if the town did decide to do something with it, it would be a big holdback, and it sounds like there are maybe some conservation issues, so that kind of makes me look away from that direction.
Yeah, it's frontage, it's front, just to correct you, it's frontage is only on West Townsend Road.
It's only on West Townsend, okay.
I mean, there is a small parcel in front that, quite honestly, my experience would be, is if that was owned commercial and somebody felt that they had a viable venture there, they would look to compile the parcels and, you know, it's a, it's a small enough parcel where it's probably not going to break the bank if somebody thinks they have a viable commercial venture, so.
Yeah, so that's, that's something I think for the conservation and Board of Selectmen to keep in mind, is they formulate their recommendations, because the intent, our intent going forward would probably be to put in, you know, commercial zoning in that area, so if they feel there's an important conservation interest, that would be a reason to be proactive about that. Beyond that, I mean, you know, the nature of this, you know, in addition to supporting conservation, open and space, if the Board of Selectmen had any interest, and like Adam said, they can acquire it for non-conservation purposes, if they wanted to put a solar field there and that happens to be near the power lines and, and that was going to generate town revenue, you know, I'd support the Board of Selectmen and, if they had some kind of, you know, town interest there, so, that's it, yep.
I just want one quick clarification, you said Mopis Brook, I don't understand what that means.
Because Mopis Brook starts there, so we might want to, as a community, like, to protect the.
Okay, so that would be something that conservation may recommend based on?
Exactly. And I'm just identifying points that we want to look at before we just say, no, we just bought the lane property, we don't want to buy more property. I just want to make sure we cover those bases. And those are some of the bullets we're thinking of just popping in our head. Okay.
Okay.
All right. We did the scenic road zoning, zoning bylaw, the design standard discussion. I don't know what that is.
I don't either, that's why I'm looking at you, I thought that that was an item.
We need to reschedule, right? We, we, where we left off, you and Chantel were going to take a crack at the sign bylaw.
Okay, so this is the Village District?
Oh, the Village, is this the Village?
It's a combination, yeah.
Well, no, Chantel's, the DLTA covers only the Village District if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, that's fine.
If there's, if there's work to be done on other items in the zoning bylaw, let's start to identify what those are.
Sure, sure.
And what our timeframe is.
Yeah.
Because putting together a zoning bylaw, you know, we want to have enough time to craft it.
Yeah.
Kind of figure out what we're doing. Chantel and I are meeting tomorrow to sort of try and nail down the remainder of what's going on with the Village bylaw. I think what I'd like to try and do is sit with her, work out a general draft, bring it to the board, rather than trying to work section by section, and send the board out a finalized draft, and I say finalized draft, but it'll be the whole bylaw, and you guys will have the opportunity to look over it, start to, you know, sort of digest it, then we can go back to the working session, sort of, we can then digest it section by section as we go through, and hopefully you guys will have comments, and, you know, rather than reading every line, it'll be, all right, I've read through it, here's some comments that I have on this section, let's take, you know, and look at it a little bit further, and if we hit a stumbling point or we need to go to a second night, we can sort of look at it that way. I think that a lot of times when communities sit down and look at zoning bylaws and do them piece by piece like that, each time you go back, you tend to rehash everything that you did the last time, so if we start with a complete bylaw, it gives us sort of benchmarks to go through. If that's sort of contrary to what you're comfortable with, we can talk about a different approach.
So I think I, I'm in spirit, I'm with you, just to give you a little of the background, we've gone through literally five out of the seven sections line by line.
And I'm not starting with.
And we're down to the last two sections.
Okay, well, and then, so we'll take that and we'll sort of, but I felt like there was a lot of comments the last time around where we were pulling apart what was done previously.
No, I think we were, I don't know, maybe, I don't have to, I think there was a lot of, we had a lot of conversation around the boundaries, which, which was separate from the text.
Sure.
And, you know, around signs, we agreed that we'd be better served if we let you and Chantel just bring us something on signs.
Okay, so that's where we're, okay.
But the thing is, here's the thing, Adam, and I don't, I totally appreciate, like, if we'd started with what you're describing.
Sure.
That would have been awesome, probably. The thing is, like, it's particularly the design bylaw part, we really went through in excruciating detail and compared our existing thing.
No, and that's fine, I.
What was in the state.
I was under the impression that it was a little less complete than, than it seems to be.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of where, I mean.
Okay.
Do you guys think that's where it's at, or what is your perspective?
Just my feeling of how we got to where we are with the Village District is, we started that back when Marion was still with us, she contracted with Regional Planning to get their help on it. They gave us a draft bylaw, I don't know what her degree of involvement was with it or not, but we had very little input previous to that initial MRPC draft bylaw getting to us. So then, it kind of sat for a little while, and when we started going back through it, we felt that it wasn't really great for us.
Economic.
It was too little change from our existing bylaw, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
And it wasn't going to drive economic, we didn't think it was going to drive.
Yeah, we didn't think it was really going to accomplish what we were looking for, is term of quality life and.
You know, I think that we, what I do recall is a discussion about the allowable uses and sort of defining them and the breadth of them that was in the bylaw that we talked about on my first day. So I think that there was some work that was going to go forward with that.
Yep.
So, and I guess that's what I'm talking about, is encompassing the whole bylaw. So if there's parts that you guys have, and that, and that's a big part of why I'm meeting with Chantel, is she's kind of got the whole history and she can say, this section, they like, they're good with, they want that, but, you know, I really think that with those uses, we need to really dial that in and be.
Yeah.
Much more specific about it, and, you know, change and allow some commercial use, but I think that they need to be less sort of everything.
Yeah, and I recall, that's, we did talk about that specifically, but, yeah, so I'm totally cool with that, I guess what I would say is, proposed changes wherever you want. If it's not, you know, signage in that last sort of special permit for larger facilities, those two, we haven't really gone over with a fine tooth comb, so you can kind of go wild on those.
Yep.
But if it's the other stuff, including the uses stuff, I know we talked, asked you at the last meeting, you sort of talked to us about the uses, we had had some back and forth with some, with some of the other people participating and whatnot. Definitely, please propose stuff, and we talked about you redoing that, but I would just say, go with a, just kind of use the revision history so we can see where.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, Jen, what you'll find is, when we do things together like this, everything I give you is going to have track changes, because it makes it easier for me to follow it, and it's much easier, when I send you stuff, so you guys can go to where I've made a change and say, okay, this is good, or.
Yep.
Ooh, what are you doing? Because, you know, I'm, I'm sort of advising you, you guys have to make the final decision on what you want to do, and I'm going to, you know, sort of craft it what I think is best, and if you don't like that, or you want to sort of talk about something different, I can explain why I said it and where we're going to go with it.
Not to be, not to drag this out too long, just a little bit of information, why we, I think we were talking about the design bylaw a second ago, Adam?
It's because, I've been trying to, because the signage in the design standard, we wanted to match up with the Village District signage, because both, we felt, needed to be looked at.
That was definitely one reason, and that was definitely a big reason. The other reason was that as we were, as we were looking, I'm totally happy with, except for signage like Joanne's saying, I'm totally happy with focusing on the Village District design bylaw, as we were, what we, we went through this exercise for a meeting or two where we compared side by side the state village model of Village District bylaw and our towns' Village District bylaw, and we kind of did like a merge, you know, picked what we liked from each, and I think some of, it's a little tricky, because most of it was geared towards the Village District, but we've, in that process, we noticed a few improvements that we could have made to our other design bylaw, so that's why I was, but I think we probably should just focus on the Village District, but that's where the thought process was.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that especially where the village is so specific and it's, and it's tight, we can kind of map that out, if we get things in there that we're like, oh, this is going to work well applied elsewhere, then we can start to work on what other parts of the bylaw the board thinks need significant work more immediately.
Yep.
And we can go to those and we can start to identify if there's things in the village that you want to replicate, or if you want them to stay in the village, because that, you want to create that unique feeling there, and you want to go somewhere else and kind of make it distinct in its own right through a different type of design, but, you know, we can talk about that as we go along.
Sounds good.
Okay, yeah, because I definitely don't want to start over. 250 Waylon Road, Luxury Apartments, no report. Master Planning, Economic Development Element, we need to schedule a new workshop.
So, Joanne, a real quick question, oh, yeah, what was that, oh, sorry, back to Waylon Luxury.
Mm-hmm.
Is the ZBA, that's not closed out yet by the ZBA?
The ZBA, that is for.
Waylon Luxury.
I don't think the ZBA closed that out yet.
Is that the old Lunenburg Village?
Yes.
I, I know that they were heading, did they not close it last, they were heading towards closing it. I spoke with Mr. Savageo, and he was there, and he said it felt like they were sort of wrapping up, and there was still some disagreement about the final sewer fee, but there was some advisement that they may be able to finalize the process and come to a separate agreement on the sewer fee issue, but I don't know that there's been a final total resolution.
Okay. So they probably have that on their calendar for November then?
That would be my assumption, I can find out and let everybody know.
I'm sorry, go ahead, what was the next one?
The next one is Economic Development, we need to reschedule the workshop. We need to reschedule the workshop. So I don't know if you want to check with John Hume, when he'd be able to come back.
You know, I don't know that we necessarily need to bring John back. I think after sitting through the last, the beginning of the last workshop, I, I think that there's some more fundamental issues that the board needs to sort of sort out and, and have a discussion with, both amongst themselves and amongst the interested parties on where we're starting with the master plan, what the process for writing the new master plan is, and how the board kind of wants to move forward. You know, the feeling that I got was that while the board did put a lot of work in and did the economic development chapter with, with John and MRPC, there was significant representation from other boards and interested parties in town that maybe weren't involved in the previous master plan process, maybe haven't had the exposure to master planning that maybe some of the board has. And maybe it, let's, let's start with what the master plan is, what the goal is, how the board wants to approach it, and then we can start talking about the, the individual elements. And I think that the, the issue that came up about the vision and what the vision for the master plan is, and that there was a previous visioning in 2012, and why didn't we do one this time, or in 2002, and why didn't we do one this time, should probably be addressed. I think that the previous vision, quite honestly, holds up quite well. It's not an old vision. You know, it's, it's only 12 years ago, and I don't, I don't believe that there's been a wholesale change to where Lunenburg wants to go as far as its, its general policy for development. I think that there's probably value in having maybe not a full design charrette, but some sort of restatement of vision and maybe taking that vision, putting it on the table, and discussing if there are minor changes, if there's any items that maybe need to be updated, maybe, and then taking that and using that to inform the rest of, of the movement on the master plan. But, you know, that's, that's sort of where I'm coming from. And I think that there's five members here that probably should have some input as well.
And I, I agree with you, and, I mean, I'm not throwing Marion on the bus here, but she, again, she did a lot of legwork on that with MRPC, and I, myself was new to the board, Matt was new to the board, Ken wasn't even on the board. And I feel like I wasn't very involved with that. She just, I was new to the board, I was just, she was doing it. She presented, this is what we're going to do, so I.
And it was a funding issue as well.
Yeah, and she was trying to structure it around funding, which, I mean.
It was the only one that there was an opportunity to move forward on, so it was either move forward on that or move forward on nothing. And so my understanding was the board said, okay, well, let's at least move forward on that, seeing now it's not going to cost us anything to do that.
Well, and I think.
That's not correct.
I think.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh, okay.
And I think that sort of.
We just spent $7,000 on this, that we're saying, forget it, and we'll start anew.
No, 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 I don't think we're saying that. What I think we're saying is that we want to.
And nobody's had a conversation with me about this.
I just want to clarify. I'm not saying that we discount anything in that chapter. What I'm saying is I think that the, the information in there is still valid. The content in there is still the same, and it shouldn't change, but I think that the response to the chapter was outside of the chapter itself, and it was more holistic to the master plan in general.
Yeah.
It's not uncommon for any community to consider funding when they're doing a master plan. It's not uncommon to do it, chapter by chapter. Even if we had $85,000 and we went and hired a consultant and we said, write us a master plan, they're going to do it one chapter at a time. Where you start, what chapter number is, what is, is wholly irrelevant. But I think that the work and information in the economic development chapter, again, is still valid, there's nothing wrong with it. But I think that the conversation about goals and vision, I think, can be.
It is kind of the precursor to the rest of the element.
It is and it isn't. The vision is, the goals, there's going to be goals in every chapter, and the first chapter is always a collection of those goals. So the first chapter is sort of the executive summary of what the policy actions are going to be for the master plan. And some communities choose to do a vision, some choose to not.
Ah, so, I, I can see your point. If there's no vision statement, I would agree with you. But if there is a vision statement, the vision really has to drive the rest of the elements.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that there's already been a vision statement. I think that where Marion worked so closely with John on that chapter, I think that she, and again, I, you know, I'm not going to speak for her, but on the, the economic development chapter.
The one we're looking at right now?
Correct.
We started after Marion was gone.
Did we?
My understanding was that was completed in December of 2013.
Then what, so what elements are they working on now?
Who? MRPC. I don't believe they're working on any of the, the master plan.
Well, they're working on housing production plan.
Oh, the housing, yeah, which, which we would parlay into a chapter. It's not going to be a chapter in and of itself. So whatever happens, there's still alterations that need to be done to a housing production to create a master plan chapter out of it.
Out of that?
Yes, it's not, you can't just take it and put it in. There's some minor alterations, but. So my understanding would be that Marion would have carried the general vision from 2002 forward because she was a major part of the 2002 plan, so it's going to reflect that vision. But I think that there's general consensus that there should be a more holistic starting point for informing the rest of the master plan. And I think that it's important to have that discussion as a public forum and not do a whole charrette, create a new vision. The vision exists. I think the town's been operating under that for more than a decade. So I think that it's just, let, let's tweak it a little bit. Let's, you know, make sure that, that, you know, the people who've become involved in the past 12 years don't have, you know, new ideas that, that might actually create a better vision or further that vision to, to a different degree.
I, I agree, I think we're agreeing.
Yes.
I wouldn't, I wasn't saying there's anything completely wrong with economic development.
No, no.
Exactly, I'm just, yeah. Exactly what you said is what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, and I, first of all, I do want to continue our discussion that we started with the boards, that was great that they came to participate, and I think they had some great feedback, and we want to capture it. To, to some of the points you made, I do think the context in which we're doing this, A, like you said, I think when we review the vision, we're going to find that it's probably pretty consistent with where we're at. And B, the, the part of the master plan, although it's not, I mean, I think, there was a lot, there was some, some feedback. I do think we need to make some modifications to, to kind of tweak, tweak up what we're, what we got there in the, in the element. I think a lot of the energy in that room, though, was really around the piece, the more prioritized action or piece that, that we really are deliberately not taking on yet. What we got is kind of the, the more expensive pro forma piece, where you got to pay people to collect data and analyze data and put it together, and doesn't involve as much elected officials doing policy decisions in terms of priorities and gathering input from the public. So I think I would, you know, I do want to continue the discussion. I do want to make modifications where needed. I don't, I think those conversations around, you know, updating the vision and, you know, around the action plan. And we, when we sat down to discuss this economic development plan, we had a, a plan for the action plan and how we're going to give you that up. Honestly, we're waiting to get through the village district so we can move on to that. But I, personally, I'd like to, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens when we meet with the boards, but I do want to get that moving in towards adoption because I don't think it's doing us any good sitting on the shelf.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think that the discussion that night about whether there should be specific, you know, it's, it's policy versus practical. And, and the master plan is a policy guidance. And I think that that's, you know, it should be a 10,000-foot view, and I think that, you know, you, you made that point, and I think that that's all part of sort of the general discussion on the master plan in general. We don't want to say that the town should do A, B, and C. It's, here's kind of where we want to get, and here's some, you know, ways that we might start to move in that direction and give everybody a little bit of wiggle room. Because as time goes on, there's different things that happen that, that give you the ability to have to change your course just a little bit to get to the same place.
Makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Okay, 40 Lemmister Shirley Road, no report. Notices and communications. 790 Mass Ave, ZBA is going to have a continuation of the gas station on November 12th. Our next meeting schedule is November 10th at 6:30 PM at the Town Hall, and then November 24th at 6:30 PM at the Ritter Building.
If I might, is there a, a reason we can't meet at Town Hall each, each time?
I.
Oh, actually, I don't know. Is there another, someone else who meets here?
I don't think that there's someone else that meets here. I think it was the hiring, because I want to do the, the TV.
Okay, but, I mean, if we're not on TV, does it matter if we're here or at the Ritter? And I ask because the last meeting we had, we were, when we were at the Ritter, we had an unexpected crowd, and it was cozy. And I think, I feel that this is a, is a nice meeting space. It offers the ability for the meeting to be a, a little bit more formal and a little bit, you know, less on top of each other in the instance that there is something. You know, if the board's comfortable at Ritter and would like to have one meeting there, that's fine. I just think that, you know, if the space is here and it's available, it, it may eliminate some of those, those cozy evenings.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, too, just in general. I think, you know, it allows people to, you know, people have demonstrated a pretty significant interest in what we do. And when they, when what we're doing kind of misses them, they often don't like that. And so I think the more we can be in this space, I think, from my perspective, the better off we are, even though, you know, it means everything we say is going to be, you know, possibly on a big room, on camera, I'm cool with that. I think it's a good idea.
Well, and, and, I mean, if, if it's a, if it's a funding issue of televising, you're not getting televised there, you can also not get televised here.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
You know, the, the space is the space, the cameras don't have to be on wall.
And we don't have to keep talking, yeah. See, if the, if the place is available, then we can switch it to here. It doesn't matter where we, if this room is available on.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't some unwritten policy or.
No, if it's available, Godspeed. Any public comment? Any board comment?
One dumb question. So town meeting is definitely not going to be until like April, May type thing?
Are we having a January?
There's no definite answer yet.
Still don't have a definite answer.
Gotcha.
And there may be, there may be a utility cost issue between this building and that building. I don't know if.
Okay, I, I can check on that as well. Good point.
Yeah, no, I think they're, they're, I think they'd be happy if, if we're using it. I don't, I just don't.
Especially at our high electric rates.
It was always that there wasn't a televised.
Yeah, and, and I wasn't sure if that was it, or if there was, you know, some other.
And I would like, and remember, any board comment? I apologize before I let a member's issue.
Well, let's see, so if it's still up in the air about town meeting potentially being, one of the things we talked about, so it's great that we've kept the scenic road on the front burner. The other thing we talked about was extending our design bylaw to cover all commercial-ish zoning. Right now, it's only specifically in commercial. It doesn't cover limited retail, a limited business and retail commercial.
Okay, so we say designed bylaw.
Design standards from the commercial section.
Oh, so it's specific in the commercial district?
Yeah. We don't have design standards for everyone.
There's so much work to do with these.
Like I said earlier, no bylaw is perfect.
No, and they're not, and, and you'll, you'll never get a perfect bylaw. Okay, so these design standards.
You didn't say that during the interview process, did you?
That there's so much work to do. I think I find more every day.
Just give you a hardback.
Um, no, it, it's, so you're talking about 465, the design standards? You'd like to extend those to all commercial districts?
Or find some appropriate design standard for the different zones. I'm sure it's different for each one, right?
It might have a guiding design standard in general, and then just make exceptions for each of the zones.
That's, that's probably the more appropriate way to do it is, is you, you set up a general standard of design, and that's what your DPR is governed by. And then each use has taken on a, how do you meet this design standard? How do you do this? How do you do that? And it's, it's less about, you know, you have to be X this, X that. It's, you know, this is what we want, this is where we want you to get to, and it applies to everything that's non-single-family or, you know, two-family residential, and then you kind of just taper it from there.
Sounds good to me.
So, you know, and that's a, that's a big task when we start talking about that because there's a lot of elements to it, and you have to sort of ease into, you know, how strict do you want to be? How loose do you want to be? And how do you want to apply it? So we can start to look at some of that if that's what you guys want.
Yeah, so I guess the, the thought of trying to do this for the next town meeting would be if it was a simple kind of extend what the one, I, I totally agree with the spirit, what you're saying. The, the issue is, I don't want, we got to get the village district thing done, and I don't want to create a body, amount of work that's going to derail, you know, like, slow that.
Well, I, I mean, I can, what I can say is we can start that process with the intent that if we get it in the spring rate, and if, if it carries on into, you know, I know that fall, January town meeting is sometimes a, you know, happens, sometimes it doesn't. And if it bleeds for a year, then you, you have that time to kind of craft it.
Okay, yeah, so I was thinking more like, like, if possible, fall, but I, I get it.
Well, I mean, that's if fall happens.
If fall happens, right, and that, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so you're, okay, we're saying the same thing. Got you, sorry.
I have another comment, and it's, it's kind of mostly for Adam. I don't know how familiar you are with 4015C, the scenic roads.
I, I'm.
But, and it probably just to, to research, to give us some information next time we're asking about it, is like, when we get, when AgCom was inceptioned, it changed the liability of the town for the ag taxes. And when we got 40R, it allowed 40S to be subsidized for new housing units. Is there any similar benefit to the town in general for having scenic roads specifically? I mean, we've got two, we're looking at potentially two more. Is there a benefit, or is it more of just a placard?
My understanding, and as I've seen it applied, it's generally just a placard. And, you know, you know, I think placard is probably, probably denigrates the scenic road a little bit.
Well, no, there's definitely beautiful vistas all over the town.
And I think that there's an inherent quality of life and attractiveness to having those type of roads that brings some residential development, and certainly some people, as we've seen with the neighbors at Flat Hill, you know, a lot of those people came and live in that area based on the way that it looks and the fact that it still remains a relatively rural, relatively farming area. So, you know, it's, it's maybe not a, an extreme financial benefit similar to 40S, but it, it does have some, you know, quality of life things. I can look further into it and see if there's additional benefit, but my gut says probably not.
Probably not, okay. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm looking, I, I tried to set it up last week and it didn't work out. If I could have a meeting with you and Chantel to kind of just go over all the things that are on the agendas and what we've been doing since January?
Sure.
Thank you. Now, Marjorie, you want to include Marjorie, where she is such a big component of that as well. So, and with that, if nobody has anything else.
Number issues? No, we don't do.
That's what we're on, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Do you have an issue?
Do you have an issue? Okay, with that, I would ascertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you all for the great input.
The Symphony Number Four by the Danish composer Carl Nielsen, the inextinguishable, performed here at Symphony Hall by the Boston Symphony Orchestra and conductor Terry Fisher. It's not often that you have a chance to hear two timpanist players battle it out. Timothy Jennison playing the timpanist on the left side of the stage, and his colleague, Dan Bausch on the right timpanist. But I'm sure they're good friends, they're musical colleagues, great players. Terry Fisher shook hands with our associate concertmaster right at the conclusion of the piece. Tamara Schminova, here he is coming back on stage, now pointing to both our timpanists, Timothy Jennison, Dan Bausch, standing at opposite sides of the stage. Timothy left, Dan Bausch right. Now all the members of the brass section standing, horns. Now the winds are up. All the members of the Boston Symphony Orchestra, sharing in the applause with our conductor, Terry Fisher, for that performance of Carl Nielsen's Fourth Symphony. A work that was first performed by the composer conducting this work, and performed for the first time in Symphony Hall by Seijio Zawa in a performance that, it's reproduced program in our program guide. Nielsen Symphony Number Four performed in April of 1978 with former music director Seijio Zawa. Now, once again, is our conductor, Terry Fisher, coming on stage applauding the members of the Boston Symphony Orchestra for that performance of this great symphony by Carl Nielsen, his Symphony Number Four, premiered in 1916 in Copenhagen, as we mentioned, with the composer conducting that first performance, as he wrote in a letter to his wife outlining his idea for a new work, "A Zest for Life or the Expression of Life." And as our conductor, Terry Fisher, described it, the last movement as a tsunami. I'm sure you'll agree. Audience demanding that our conductor come out again. Here he is, conductor of the Utah Symphony Orchestra. Terry Fisher, again, wants all the members of the Boston Symphony Orchestra to stand with him. A busy guest conducting career, taking him to orchestras as diverse as London's Philharmonia, the Czech Philharmonic, Frankfurt Radio, the London Symphonyetta, and the Scottish Chamber Orchestra. Remember, you can hear this concert again on demand when you visit our website, classicalwcrb.org/BSO. That's where you'll also find our complete broadcast schedule, as well as interviews and features that enrich your experience of the BSO. Again, that's at classicalwcrb.org/BSO. Well, WCRB and the Boston Symphony wish to acknowledge the many generous donors who make these BSO concerts possible, are also indebted to the musicians of the Boston Symphony Orchestra and to the Boston Musicians Association for their support of these broadcasts. We urge you to attend concerts at Symphony Hall and throughout the committee. This broadcast of the Boston Symphony is produced on air and online by Brian McCrethe. Our audio producer is Antonio Oriot-Ross, with assistance from Nick Squire. And our thanks to Bernadette Horgan and Taryn Lott of the Boston Symphony Press Office, Mark Mandell and Robert Kersinger of the BSO Publications Department, and to Bruce Creditor and Lynn Larson of the BSO Personnel Office for all their help with these broadcasts. I'm Ron Delacchio. So thank you for joining us for the Boston Symphony Orchestra from WCRB, a part of WGBH Boston.
Music on WCRB is here thanks to you and Newton Wellesley Hospital in Newton. Newton Wellesley Hospital is proud to sponsor the Boston Symphony Orchestra concerts throughout the season here on 99.5 WCRB and WGBH's...